Let's bring the March twenty seven, twenty twenty four regular board meeting in the Big Bear area. Replenish Water Agency to order Director Walton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want you to approve the agenda. Thank you. We're going to move on to public forum. The public forum is for items that are not on the agenda. And we'll take up, so if you're here, if this, this item does not, public forum is not your opportunity to talk about anything else. So if there's items on the agenda, we will get to it. And actually, Big Bear, the replenish Big Bear item is going to come up shortly. So, so again, this is just a public forum if any of you'd like to stay not on the agenda. Would anybody in the audience have interest to speak?
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Joseph Bell. I actually housekeeping for Marwan. Often, housekeeping is not pleasant. This is not pleasant for me, but I have to go. As an advocate of public transparency for the public, and I need to address this. In recent meeting of the CSD Board, some members of this board were in attendance. And Mr. Shagurian, Director Miller spoke at the CSD meeting. And he told me he was going to speak at the CSD meeting beforehand, and I said, Jim, that would be a Brownian violation. Because that makes the court. And he said, he checked with David Lawrence. So he checked with David Lawrence, and David Lawrence told Jim, Miller, and me that the attorney said there's a, an exception or an exemption, and that he would get the exception to me, but he never got the exception to me. So in my assessment, that's a Brownian violation. And I think that's important because that protects our rights as the public. I can't see the timer. So I'm going to, I'll bring back more information for you on that. Also, I've been in contact with our supervisor, county supervisor, Dawn Rao for years. And on this project, she has steadfastly held that, in her opinion, the people should get a vote on this project, whether it goes forward or not. And so Director Dorner represents the county, and I think will be appointed over. Don Rao is responsible for his appointment to this board, supposedly representing Fonskin. And I have not seen Director Miller echo our supervisor, Don Rao's opinion. So that's, that concerns me. And this, I recently spoke with her, so that was something. And I sent an email to all of the city council members asking them a simple question about, is it fair for this plan, is it fair? And all of the city council members replied except for Rick Eric. So I don't know, maybe he doesn't have an opinion, or maybe doesn't want to talk to the public. But another, neither Joe, neither Joe, I can't hear you, neither Joe, whatever, this is my kind of speaking. But you didn't reply to my email. That's a fact, and that's can be proven, it's on the record, whatever. Reason, another point is Rick Eric has, owns property, lives in property, has late-term property. He has access to our show.
And actually, I think.
I think this is starting to drip over into some.
No, I still talk this, and I mentioned twice.
Nine seconds.
We have nine seconds left.
Okay, it's a heart of public interest, and Director Herrick had an opportunity at a city council meeting. I'd like to have my time that was taken from me by Director Herrick. And who asked for legal opinion and added.
Okay, we're done, Joe. Thank you.
I'll give you back the information for that, too.
Okay, there was a legal opinion regarding this.
That, that's, yeah, so that's correct.
It is on.
Dave, you want to explain that, the legal opinion that we received?
So the legal opinion for, I'll, I'll explain both of them, just so that we're clear. The legal opinion that we got from our attorney with regard to Mr. Miller coming to speak at CSD's board meeting is there is an exemption. I'm happy to provide that information to you, but there was a definite direction from our attorney that that was perfectly legal for him to speak there. So I am happy to have that debate with you, or you can have it with our attorneys. I got no problem with that. The second part is, we also have a legal opinion with regard to Mr. Herrick. And Mr. Herrick has every right to weigh in on this, on the replenish Big Bear project. He has no more benefit than anybody else in the entire valley. So there is emphatically not, no, there's no qualms that he has every right. He does, there's no conflict of interest for him, period.
I just didn't comment on this since it got out. I don't live on the lake. I live very close to Lake. I do not live on the lake, so I just want to make sure that that is.
That's what I expect.
Just to sort of, I am a resident of the CSD, if you don't know the name of the lake. All right. General managers tonight, can we have general managers report?
Yeah, I just wanted to open this up to the board to see if they have any questions. But one of the things I did want to point out, just in regard to the replenish Big Bear project itself, there is a actual project revenue and expenditure report in the general manager report. It's there on a monthly basis. We're going to actually add a couple of comment columns to this report to better reflect what we're spending in a given year. And so that way, they, the board is aware of the remaining balance as well. So it's, you'll see that in the next general manager report, but I just wanted to let you know that was coming. And that information is available to the board for consideration at every meeting.
There will be board directors having questions about Mr. Walton. Sitting on, we move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion at the appropriate time. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If they need to have the second mandatory, any governing board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar and considered double. Any board members which are removing an item from the consent calendar? All right, sitting now, can we have a motion to approve, move to approve? Sorry. Mr. Walton, third, third and second, both please.
Vice Chair Harris? Director Musso?
Aye.
Director Sabovia?
Aye.
Director Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Miller?
Aye.
So I introduce the consent calendar. We'll move on to item number nine, which is replenish Big Bear options. So Lawrence, your idea?
Yeah, so the board directed staff to investigate a couple of items at the last meeting. And so we're here to bring that information to the board for their consideration. One of the things that the board wants us to do is investigate a agreement with NWD. We have sent a letter to NWD funding, funding intent. And we actually had made some headway with them, and which is great. And there's a couple of items that they would like, information they would like before they make any kind of decisions or forward that stuff to their board. So, but we're working and we're making great progress with it. So I'm very pleased. The next one they asked us to do is get a, discuss an agreement with, with, excuse me, with the mountain resort. And DWP is actually handling that. And I don't know if you have an update, but at this point, I think they're still in negotiations with agreement, but maybe Reggie, you have some information.
Yeah. No additional information. We have been in constant communication with them throughout the project. And they have reiterated that they are interested in working with us to provide access to their existing facilities to save the community lots of money on infrastructure to install the percolation facilities. That hasn't changed.
Perfect.
The next is the advisory election. We could talk to legal counsel. It's a little bit complicated because we don't have a voter base, because we don't have a board that's elected. If you wanted those results to be binding, that adds another level of complication. The easy part of that is that the city of Big Bear Lake and CSD both have voter bases that you get elected from. CSA fifty-three B and the unincorporated areas of the county do not. So one thing that the county could require is that all county residents vote on replenish Big Bear, even those who don't live in Big Bear Lake and not actually. And we don't know if the county can accommodate the logistics just to get it within Barwa's properties. The other option is a public opinion poll. It's a simpler process where you can develop a comprehensive survey. You can survey more than the yes or no vote that an advisory can do. It is expected to be less expensive, and you can have the results sooner than mid-December. Neither of these options would be binding on Barwa or the member agency boards or councils. In either option, the best-case scenario would be the result being the same across the board, meaning all yes or all no. However, if that doesn't happen, we have two board members that say no, and three board members that say yes, depending upon the results. It doesn't give us that fourth, fifth vote to proceed with the WIPIA loan.
So is there any questions, any questions from board members?
Measure I was put out by the fire JPA. And as a JPA, which in theory then doesn't have a voter base either, how did they justify that?
I don't know their specific, I think they're by district. I don't know the specifics about them, so you might want to get that from them specifically, how they accomplish it. All we can do is relay what our attorney is telling us, and our attorney's telling us, you know, JPAs are kind of an interesting animal. They don't have a voter base. And so therefore, we have three customers, and so therefore, we wouldn't be able to actually go to them and send them an actual ballot based on, you know, you are not elected to our board. You're appointed to our board, and that's, that's the big distinction. I don't know how the fire department is set up, if they are a district or.
We don't have districts, and we are not elected to that board. We are on the board by virtue of being CSD.
Yeah, and I don't know how, that's a measure, by the way. That's a little bit different than an advisory vote.
But it's still, we still, the lawyer did say that we still don't have our voter base because of the unincorporated areas. So I don't know with the fire department if they also have the unincorporated areas like Lake Williams and all the Lake voter on measure I. We don't know those details.
Yeah, that would be something that you'd have to talk to the fire department, see how they accomplish their goal. But I, you know, just from our attorney's perspective, there was, you know, they, they don't know. They don't know the physical, you know, apparatus to make this happen. It doesn't mean it can't, you know, it doesn't mean it can't, but they just don't know one. And then.
Except that if they don't know the mechanism, then their opinions kind of change.
Yep, in their experience, it's not happened.
You have a question, board members? What is reelection? Are we moving on?
Yes, I'm moving on to the WIPIA loan. So the board asked me to investigate how long we had with the WIPIA loan. So on the WIPIA law, we had a couple of things. Six months is not an issue for the WIPIA loan. They, they said they can hit the pause button and keep carrying the information forward. After a year, there, some of the things become problematic because of a bunch of environmental documents would have to be updated. Some of them are only good for one year. And then after two years, they would just cancel the entire process. The biggest deterrent for us, though, is not really about that. It's actually about when Barwa runs out of cash to continue the process. And that, that would be November. So September would be like the last time for us to have opportunity to, for us to have the loan in place and make sure that we had funding moving forward after November. So. So as far as the grant deadlines, they're listed out in the staff report. There's a bunch of different deadlines for, for the grant. IRWM has a, has a deadline. I think it's December of twenty twenty-five. All work must be completed in that grant. For the, I think that's the technical assistance grant. And then we have the other work that's supposed to be done by March thirty-first of twenty-six for the, it's like four, about four, four and a half million of that grant. That's the IRWM Prop One, Round One Grant. The other grant that we have, Title sixteen, the planning grant, the deadline for that one is August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. We have to have that work completed. And then the stag grant is, the stag grant is twenty thirty-one. So. Any questions about that item?
Can you help him keep the door open, take over the things, Joe?
So we'll go on. Is there any? So just.
I'm sorry, are we ready? Yeah, I think we're just looking for it. There are a few extra chairs up here. Anybody raise your hand out, chair, make a chair next to them. Everyone up here.
There was a question about, one of the other questions was about program water equity issues. And so just there right now, there are funding letter of intents between DWP, CSD, and Barwa. And that was fully executed on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. And then there was an extension in September twenty, September twenty-seventh on twenty twenty-four that basically in those, in those letter of intents that broke up water between CSD and DWP at a sixty-eight to thirty-two percent. And the funding listed on that at that time was four hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. There is some alternative methods that, that we'd like to bring to the board's attention. One of the things that we heard was that some of the members were concerned about their equity of the water. So we have come up with a kind of a new concept for the board to consider. There is, what we did is we took the three-year average flow, which is basically what we typically do when we figure out the flow portion of your rate structure. So it's seventy percent fix, thirty percent flow. We use the three-year average. And we came up with percentages. So that would be CSD at forty-three percent, the city at fifty-three percent, and CSA three, fifty-three B at four percent. The agent could consider taking that, those percentages and applying them against the project water and divying up the project water based on those percentages. That would leave CSD to be allocated nine hundred and fifty-four acre feet. The city of Big Bear Lake would be allocated eleven hundred and sixty-three acre feet. And CSA fifty-three B would be allocated eighty-three acre feet. What that means is Barwa would clean it up to the standards that were required to. And then we could take, we could turn that water over to CSD for whatever use they felt necessary for it. We could turn it over to the city for whatever use they felt necessary with that eleven hundred acre feet. And we could turn the balance over to the county for their consideration and whatever they felt necessary for that use. So in the city's perspective, if the city wanted to take the entire eleven hundred and fifty-three and recharge some aquifers or re-inject it, they, they could go do that. If they wanted to put it in the lake and, and work a deal with NWD to keep it in the lake, they could, they could do that. If CSD wanted to take their nine hundred and fifty-four acre feet that we produce for them, then they could take that and they could run a pipe up to Vandusen, buy some property up there, some spreading grounds, install some wells. And I'm only quoting that because that's what's described in the water sustainability plan is, is that concept. And then go up there and drop the nine hundred and fifty-four acre feet up into that area and pull it back out for their use with their customers. So they, they definitely have those, they have, you know, they have those options to do. They could consider a direct potable work reuse someday as well. So they have many different options. Each, each member agency has many different options they could consider. And I just wanted to make sure that we tried to address the concept of the concept that the, the board was expecting when it came to program water equity. And I know that's a lot to mull over because it's a, you know, it's kind of a out-there concept. So I'm open to some questions. I'm sure somebody's going to have some questions about that.
Can this be implemented? We're this far into the program. Can it be implemented?
Well, far as far is concerned, we just, we, you know, our discharge line will be, still be at the lake. Because, you know, what we'd have to probably do for the member agencies that wanted to consider this is probably give them a first right of refusal of the water. And then still work our, you know, our contracts out with NWD. And of course, until another member agency step forward and do something else with it, we'd have to still work out those details with NWD. But, you know, far as far was concerned, where we discharge is basically where we end. If that discharge point was then connected to a, somebody else's line that wanted to take it up to Vandusen, they could put a T in and do that. They want, if the city wanted to take that and pump it up to Sand Canyon and somewhere else, you'd have to talk to Reggie about that, but somewhere else, they could, they could do that. We would still pursue what we would pursue as far as a discharge permit. Just because, you know, again, you know, this, some of these features can be expensive to do for the, and, you know, we wanted, we would want to make sure that, that we were covered to dispose of the water, which is our only responsibility is really to dispose of the water at this time. So it's definitely doable. Again, it would be on the member agencies to accomplish. It would not be on Barwa to accomplish. We, you know, we end at the discharge.
I guess, yeah, that makes some credit to Reggie. Where are the recharge basins areas in CSD? I don't, I remember them flipped in the report, but I don't totally cover up the order.
Yeah, and we looked at those more extensively when we first started the project nine years ago. And there's the green spot in Earl Lake, as Larry pointed out, at the CSD meeting. It can, you can successfully estimate the shot of precise signs and estimate a thousand acre feet a year at Green Spot. The, what was also stated in that report was that if you do that, the groundwater is relatively high in that area, and that quantity would mount up. And if you, to prevent the mounting from bubbling up under people's houses as you get near the Stickelback Pond, you would have to install some new wells, basically make a cutoff wall, if you will, and pump those wells to intercept that additional flow having those complications of mounting. So, you know, it's possible that it's like anything, the devil's in the details. Another place that they can, they didn't investigate extensively nine years ago, but it is certainly feasible is to percolate in Vandusen Canyon. But there you have the added complication of being on forestry land and, and all those complications that go along with that. So they have two very viable areas to percolate, but there's a lot of work to do to get there.
Thank you. Any other questions? We labeled this as a project. And I understood someone passed paperwork, said how many times it's been discussed, bold, underline, how many actions were done?
Sixty-one, forty, forty, bold, underline.
But each time, I understood that this was a, if you will, package deal. You were going to produce the water out here, take it through the marsh, from the marsh to the lake, snowmaking line up to the top of Summit, new line across the ridge and over to Sand Canyon. But never having seen until the twenty-eighth of last month, this new price of eighty-six point seven million, I still thought it was the entire project. Now I understand that's only given harder to division than everything else. I'd argue it would have to be built, borrowed, or developed somehow. And then later in this discussion, it's not even handed off to the DWP and CSD. It's whichever agency, wherever they want to put it, whatever they want to build to get it. That's all going to be on top of this proposal. Am I right so far?
Speak up. Thank you.
So, so let me just point a couple of things. The, the project, but the, the, the project budget has the, the one day, well, I don't know if we should just keep beating this up, but the cost estimate for the project has not changed since March of twenty twenty-three. You're seeing a new number in there because of the WIPIA loan. That's the only reason why. And like I said last time, we only have one chance at getting a loan. We didn't have, we didn't have grant agreements in place. We said, oh, we're going to put this contingency in, in this number because that, because if we don't, if I forbid, something happens to those grants, or something else happens, we need to make sure that that WIPIA loan is high enough because it is the cheapest money we can, we can get, period. So that's the only reason. You're seeing a huge contingency in there. That's not the project cost. The project cost has not changed since twenty twenty-three. Just to say that.
But the project cost you're talking about is only to get the water to division.
It, it, our project only legally allowed to get our water to division. We are not legally allowed to invest any money in those other processes. We are Barwa. We're only allowed to do treatment and disposal. That's it.
So when you talk about each agency having a share of the water produced and the cost that we would be, I thought in the past, ask to pay if we wanted the water. How, if the water, as you said before, is no longer yours once it hits the marsh, how does the CSD or the DWP buy this water that is going to be taken back out of Sand Canyon? If you don't own it, why would I pay you?
Okay, that I'm not, it's just a reiterate, I'm not asking for you to pay me anything. The rate structure is already in place to produce this water.
Who are we paying?
You're not paying anybody. If you don't, you're not going to pay anybody. The water that this is from your, your services, you may take it if you want it. It's yours. But I, the, the agency can, the board can take action to, to give you their first right of refusal to take this water and do something else that you would like.
When you say agency, you mean Barwa, right?
No, yes, Barwa as an agency can, can. No, yes, Barwa as an agency can can sign over. It's, cause now per twelve-ten, Waterco twelve-ten, once it hits our once it hits our facility, we treat it, we own the water. If you would like, if you would like that water, because there was a an issue with equity, I am saying to you is the the that the agency could take steps to make it available to CSD to do what they wish with it. Once it, once it's cleaned up to the standard and they could recharge, they could do all these things. They could go get, you know, go get permits to recharge it. They could go build pipelines to recharge if they'd like. Um they could get permits to to do a direct portable um injection back into their system. Um cause that is gonna become a thing very shortly. We've talked about AB five seventy-four. Um that is going to, that's gonna become law very shortly here in the next, I would say that by the next year, that'll make it available so CSD could put us a T in and put it back into their system, if they still choose. We're just giving the option to CSD and the city and the county to really take ownership of their water if they would like it. And there would be no additional cost to do that for uh from Barwa. We would not, you know, there's no, we're not selling you the water. We're giving you back the ownership of the water and giving it back to you, and you may do with it as you please.
Assuming it never went in the marsh, never went to Sand Canyon.
It it might go there, you might have to work some sort of deal out with MWD. If it goes back in there, I would assume they're gonna, they're gonna wanna, and and I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot about this because, but I would assume that there would be, you would have to make some sort of agreement with MWD to to extract your water if it went to the marsh. If you intercept it before it gets to the marsh, then it's yours and you can do what you want with it.
And unfortunately, we don't have MWD here.
Yes, MWD is right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the response I was looking for.
If the water ends up in your marsh, in your lake, it's yours.
Correct.
And if I want the water in Sand Canyon, then do I have to buy the water back for me?
Yes, you'd have to pay for acre fee charge.
Okay, so I do understand the concept. Who is the manager in charge of the sustainability project?
Reggie.
Reggie.
Yes, this is confusing.
Yes.
And what I'm hearing is we could end up with water produced here that had essentially nowhere to go because the apparatus had not yet been built to get it to Sand Canyon or Green Spot or anywhere else. Because for those projects, you would have to do the same thing you did for this project. Engineer, design, build. But you can't do that until you have the permits to cross forest service plan, cross county land, school district, whatever. Uh we could end up then if that took a concern in two years, you could conceivably end up producing water that had no home.
Well, a- and if you recall, I mean, again, I'm floating a concept out there, okay? So I'm just giving opportunity. We would still make our agreement with MWD because I still have to have a place to discharge if you should fail.
And you said at one point that if DWP or CSD didn't want it, that you could sell it to Fair Valley Mutual. And the only way I can see getting it to them would be to send it down Bear Creek. And if the purpose of this project is to keep the water in the valley. I had a very respectful audience last week, so let's uh.
I'm sorry, he just nailed it, Reggie.
Please, please, please do not interrupt our speaker.
I I'm sorry, Larry.
I'm hearing your options and I'm trying to work through those options. And I'm finding that the loan doesn't provide all those options. It only will provide water here at Barwa. And then it's up to DWP or CSD on what we want to do with it and how we get it there. And so the city could do a system to Sand Canyon. CSD could do a system to Green Spot, and we will not pay your expenses. You won't pay our expenses. And then having paid to produce the water, we not have to buy it back.
No, 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 you're you're you're, there, there is no buyback. I am going to, I am going to just read, I'm just going to give you, you already paid for it to be produced.
Yes.
Now I'm just going to let you have it.
So, yeah, why did that require an agreement? And the costing of the agreement as to who gives how much water and where it's gonna go?
So so this is a new, a new concept, a new alternative for you to consider. The reason I brought it up was only because there was concern about water equity. And this concern that you, that I think it was you that brought up the um the the CSD members weren't getting their fair share. I'm giving, I'm saying, not me personally, I'm gonna say the agency has the opportunity to give the CSD back their water that they put into the system.
And if we or the DWP has nowhere to put it, nothing built.
Then I'll put it into the lake.
And what makes that not a gift of public funds?
It's a disposal point for me. And and I, and I think we spoke just a few minutes ago about an agreement that isn't still on the works with.
But here it says the water has value. And then you're proposing that it's okay to just throw it away?
No, 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 it's not throwing it away. Remember, we talked about in the beginning of this, we talked about the fact that there is a letter of intent with MWD in negotiations right now.
I was gonna say, we still don't have that though.
Right, and you're, and 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 Larry, I mean, just to be clear, there there are reasons why, right? I mean, there are requirements of MWD. When we put the water in the lake, there are requirements of MWD. We're testing and monitoring and and offset programs and all these other things. And before they can make a decision on the, you know, the value of those things to them and the value of this water to them, those things have to be established for them to consider a letter of funding intent.
So it could be determined that they don't want it or cannot accept it because fishing game or army corps, somebody says, no?
They've already said to you, they want the water. They've already said that to you.
I have to take you at your word because.
No, no, you heard it from her.
I don't see an agreement.
He's a little PM over there.
The water, it just has to be up to the standard that we've set, you know, from the beginning of the project. The regional board marks off on the discharge permit that the water quality is good enough um to be put into the lake. Then the lake will take the excess water. That would be too much for the aquifers.
And you would be more than happy to accept the free water?
Well, yeah, but it does impose extra monitoring and impact services that we would have to provide that would be um put onto the district. Because with the first time ever water being introduced to the lake, that's not coming naturally from the sky, um we're gonna have additional monitoring requirements and different thresholds within our TMDL that we will have to meet, which will require extra staff time and monitoring and testing.
And are those requirements different than those imposed for the Stickelback?
I don't know.
Yes.
With the Stickelback, but I would assume they would be.
Fishing, fishing game has different standards for the endangered species out in Shea Meadow than they do for this lake. This lake has a TMDL and has a basin objective. And we, and, you know, based on our pilot, our piloting program, we can meet those, those uh requirements.
And did you by chance find out whether the gentleman that said there aren't even any Stickelback in the pond, is that true or rumor or what?
I I, that's a something for Glenn to.
Well, I keep this up because initially, this project, project, still a good word, would produce water to be uh used instead of our drinking water from the CSD for the Stickelback.
Right.
Then it was taken off the table. And then it was said, well, we'll send the water to the golf course, to the summit's bike park and to uh for dust control and reforesting parts of something.
Right, and but that was always part of the plan. The Stickelback was also always part of the plan. I'm just looking for an opportunity to save the the agency sixty thousand dollars a year in testing. There's additional testing to require at sixty thousand dollars a year to put in about twenty acres over at twenty uh acre feet. And right now, that's what it runs between twenty and twenty-five acres. I I know that because I pay a third of the bill. So to put the the water over in the Stickelback, it was about sixty thousand dollars a year. In lieu of that, we thought it was much better than, because we were already gonna have to test the lake, because of those requirements already, we said, hey, let's go ahead and put it into the lake and have DWP wheel CSD an initial twenty acre feet to offset the twenty acre feet they're using at the Stickelback and make them whole for the water. So that was the, that was the concept. We're just trying to save the, we're just trying to save money. That's, that's part of our job is to make sure that we use our money wisely. And so we're, we're just trying to do that by 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 saving sixty thousand dollars a year, not testing out there.
And you said this has always been part of the project was the bike bicycle, pardon bicycle course, what do you want to call it, in the golf course. And as long as I've been following this, I didn't see that until maybe a year and a half ago.
Okay, so the, so I've been here seven years. And I, the golf course came up right off the offset because we thought we could offset some of their, the drip they're grabbing out of the same aquifer as DWP is. So we've decided, hey, that's a, that's, if they're gonna grab it out of the same aquifer, you know, then why not, instead of having to do that, use project water to do the, to to irrigate? But that was about six, seven years ago, that decision was made. And then the bike park.
The bike park was brought up a few years ago, although I can't tell you how many years.
Five, six years ago, somewhere around that.
We, like I said, we've continued to speak with the summit. And because of their uh gains in efficiency of uh snowmaking, uh they have the right to pump up to thirteen hundred acre feet a year. Um and they have, they don't come close to that currently this year, where they have pumped a lot of, uh made a lot of snow. They're at eight fifty-nine hundred, which is quite south of there. So because they can uh produce snow more efficiently, they don't see the need that, and they don't have the right to uh use dust control on that mountain bike park. Their current uh permit with the MWD, correcting if I'm wrong, it is to make snow and provide protection. So there would be an additional permit required if they wanted to use it for dust control and also to irrigate the golf course. So that's part of the complication why we don't have written agreements. There's many steps to get there. We could do letters of intent uh quite rapidly. But uh the actual written agreement, uh it is a subject to uh multiple agencies uh approval, MWD, because it would ultimately be purchased from them. And then MWD has to get concurrence from uh Fair Valley Mutual because it's dealing with lake water. So uh the, so the um resorts do not need it, uh project water for uh, what's that?
For making snow.
Yeah, right, they don't need additional for making snow. They don't need additional for dust control if they choose to go that route.
Have they, along the lines of an MWD commitment to take water or accept it? Maybe is a better word. It has, as Ski Slope said, they want that water?
Want water for irrigation?
For the golf course, for, because that's not making snow either, for dust control, for reforestation. Have they made a commitment, even if it's not signed, sealed, delivered contract binding? The people I've talked to said they don't want the water.
They don't need it.
They don't.
They don't want it, they don't need it, they're not gonna pay for it.
No, they they have told us that they're willing to uh irrigate the golf course with water. Uh DWP and CSD will pay for that water. Uh and why we would do that, to percolate water, there are losses. The trees take some, the plants take some. So if you put a hundred acre feet, you might get uh ninety-seven acre feet uh in uh by the time it gets to the aquifer. Uh it's not a precise science, but there are losses. With in lieu of irrigating the golf course with a hundred and twenty acre feet, instead of pulling it out of the aquifer, I mean, the well service, don't throw away my uh DWP's potter wells versus the irrigation wells. Uh they don't turn on their irrigation wells, they turn on their lake pump, pump the water up, irrigate the golf course. So we get a hundred and twenty acre feet benefit of not stressing the aquifer. So that's actually a better view of it percolating.
You mean this is after they get an agreement that allows them to take water other than snowmaking?
That's correct. And that will be done in conjunction with us and MWD.
But we're also back to the case of no signed agreements, only handshakes at best.
And and that's why we went and saw how long we have to still maintain the WIPIA button. We have six months to get those agreements in place.
To produce water that won't go in the lake because it has to stay in your ownership. And there's not yet a system to accept it if it were to go in the lake.
No, uh if it, if it went in the lake, uh we have, you know, studied this for nine years and we felt the most economical way to percolate it would be in Sand Canyon. And we knew, and we stated that we have to build the facilities. And my estimate for those, because the uh resorts uh aren't going to put in a new pipeline, that will reduce our costs. So it's in in the million to a million and a half dollar range to build a pipeline of Sand Canyon and to build a booster station. And we're gonna build the booster station now uh because of the mountain resorts pipeline. We can build it on our existing well site uh within the existing well building. Cause we're, we're, uh DWP's already planning to redo that building in the next couple of years. So we'll just make it a little bigger. So we already have electrical service, uh we have in um, so we can make the booster much more economical. So those, that's the most economical way that I see at this point uh to utilize water for percolation.
And still a cost and a project outside of what you're talking about here?
That's correct. It it really has nothing to do with, you know, we're shooting at disposal of wastewater. That's all of our. It it really has nothing to do with, you know, we're shooting at a disposal of wastewater. That's all of our.
Thank you.
I didn't make mean to make it worse. I just wanted to give you guys options. Okay, so the other item. That um that the board brought up was equivalent dwelling unit calculation. Just to give you all a little background, I mean, our. Equivalent dwelling unit calculation has been in place since nineteen seventy-seven. Uh it is a agreement, I mean, it is a process by which um. Barwa developed. And adopted here and then. Um went ahead and forwarded to the member agencies and they were required to adopt that as well. For equivalent dwell units and how those are calculated. There are, go ahead.
Did you, has it ever been updated?
Yeah, it has been updated.
When?
Um.
You mentioned seventy-seven.
Nineteen seventy-seven, there was another update.
People with nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight, yeah, sorry, nineteen ninety-eight.
Twenty-five points infusible.
Right, so it's it was updated, but again, the type of that, if you look out in the. Say, community um or. Uh calculating EDUs, the process has pretty much stayed pretty consistent throughout um that time. There are different options the board could consider. Uh alternative methods, but again, we would, you know, like to go back to our legal counsel before we. Put too much effort into the actual calculation um for this. And and again, this would. Barwa would develop the concept, it would be up to the member agencies to implement. So meaning um Glenn would have to go and find out every. Um connection that he had. And the square footage, say if we used a square footage one, and find out how much square footage was each connection. Um and he would have to do that and then report back to us the number of EDUs based on that. But we could definitely. Through a process, look at. Probably bringing on a consultant to look at the different methods, but specifically if we. If the board wanted to consider one specific method, then we could have a consultant look at that and give us. A breakdown on how to implement a method like that and develop a ordinance that would. Reflect those that uh method and then pass that on to the member agencies for them to implement. The key to this, though, is no matter which method that they choose. Every agency under Barwa would have to agree to the same calculation. So it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to, you know, CSD don't do square footage. Um the city decides they wanna do fixture counts and. You know, then we get a reported EDUs. It it wouldn't, it wouldn't work uh that way. I know there was a concern about equity and. An eight hundred square foot home paying the same as a six thousand square foot home. Uh far as the number of EDUs, I know that was a a concern uh and an issue. Again, I understand those thing, I understand that thing, you know, the the member agencies also would have the right to. Look at their own calculations on their end instead of adjusting it on on a borrower behalf because. Ours are pretty straightforward. It's it would make it very difficult to calculate the number of EDUs per, you know, the the. The cost per EDU. It would be make it more difficult to. Uh and challenging for us to have differing costs. You know, than than, you know, because it might not reflect the same as the flow that comes into the agency. And so there could be some. Say differences of opinion or or concerns about that whole process. In the in the future. I mean, definitely happy to to get board direction on whatever you want me to look at.
Let me add here because I don't wanna confuse the. I I mean, CSD knows, but I mean, they know the the gross amount they have. They have to admit to borrow every year to the to the rate payers in their their tax bill. But why can't, why can't CSD develop their own? Like square footage, because I, you know, EDU is kind of our kid, I agree, but it's kind of our kid way. Why can't CSD choose their own method, different than the city big bear way? I don't understand why. Everybody has to have the same way to to allocate that money to the rate payers. I, that's confusing to me.
I mean, the other, the other couple things that would bring concern to me about doing it differently. First off, there would be some. You know, equity issues, like what if a six thousand foot. Square foot home in CSD was paying a different rate to Barwa than. A six thousand square foot home in the city. I mean. If there, you could, people could get some heartburn over that issue. So there could be. And I don't even know if that would be legal, by the way. I I would still, right now, our. Our ordinance and our funding agreements, I mean, what's, our agreement says. They have to be the same. Uh there's a, there's a legality, there's some legal direction in there about. They have to, it has to comply with a couple of different regulations to make sure that that could all happen. You know, I'm I guess.
It is possible, I mean.
It is possible to look at it. I'm not saying it's possible to implement it. And I'm not even sure it's even possible to get the member agencies to agree to different methods. Or to agree on one method. Um because this seventy thirty split, I think it was back in twenty twelve. The seventy thirty split was seventy percent fixed based on EDUs and thirty percent flow. Took a little while to get there and then we actually did discover during the process that. There was um. This, the city was supplementing CSD's bills for a while. And.
I I just, uh, you know, I think a lot of the work is done during, you know, pre-digital age, I think, right, before now, maybe we.
I I'm I'm happy to investigate it and to give you at least, I I can check for the legal opinion on, you know, the options. Um and and I'll report back to the board on those. Um I I'm not sure. You know, I'm not sure how it pertains to this specific project, um but. It it, you know, it's definitely something that we could look at um if the board gives us that direction, but.
It, I think, is connected in that. Last meeting, the burden to the plant was listed as forty-eight percent CSD, forty-seven percent city, we'd relate. Five percent county. And as I looked at the figures in six A, September, January, February. Every one of those months, the city contributed more than forty-seven percent.
Yeah, just to clarify, that that's the, that's based on strictly based on number of EDUs. If you, if you just had me calculate the number of EDUs, you were forty-seven percent. The city's forty-seven percent and and they're five percent.
But you've been used to attribute expense to produce the water.
Only for the fixed amount and not for the variable amount. That goes EDU, the number of EDUs are are only portion on the fixed amount.
And when you say everybody has to use the same system. Don't you already have a case where Ron Skin pays a whole lot more for their?
But that's, our rate is still exactly the same to them.
And the other rates are developed by the city, by CSD, by county?
That's right. So their portion of the collection is a different rate and those are based off of. Whatever.
Even though the notes say the county absorbed the cost. But what that was, Larry, is if the county absorbed the increase, if the county special district fifty-three B. Has their overhead costs, they attach a problem bar this rate. And last year, there was a four, a four, uh whatever it was we had last year, the county made a decision. Because that's an efficiency that they did not, without increase, not not total, not just the increase. So in your perception, everybody still takes the same rate?
I still get the same amount from every single customer for every EDU. I mean, the difference, I'm sorry, the difference is only in the flow for the fixed portion, I'm gonna correct myself there, right?
Oh, this is.
Don't hang me yet.
Okay, these are flow percentages.
For the, for the, for the, for the flow section of the the rate, that is the difference. The city typically uh produces more flow. But has ha- um has less EDUs, but they produce more flow. Overall, the, you know, mostly probably because of the commercial aspect of things. Um and so. That's, um, so that is, um, so their rates per EDU are a little higher based on that thirty percent variable piece. See how complex this can get?
Yes. Sorry, David. Let me react here. Um, okay, so.
So that's the only other thing is, I I have one quick question. The the fireboard, uh. Is that, is that just the city and CSD um in the fireboard or is there any county involved? So you do have a voter base then? Because it's the county and the CSD.
No, it's the city.
I'm sorry, city, the city and CSD. So you do have a voter base. Because you both can go out to the voters and and you're you're all elected to that. Um to, so that's probably how they, how they um went out to your voter base. I I'm just surmising, but that's, that would be my. Uh I know Larry asked that before and.
Let's go on, uh, or here, yes, before we move on. The uh. They have pretty important regarding how much water is going to be surely leaving these um. Uh I mean, I heard you say, Larry, but I wouldn't throw this idea out yet. It needs to be discussed more. Uh analyzed a little bit more. So um I'm hoping it's not rejected. I'm hoping it's kept on the table for discussion. We have a little time to do that. Um. The EDU discussion, I think, is well worth bringing that up again.
Okay.
Uh at some point, even if, even if for whatever reason, uh it's not applied to replenish, probably should be. Uh looked at again at some point. Whether we do anything or not, I think it's, it's debatable uh with that. And it is, it's all very confusing because you have EDUs, you have different properties. Uh and you have flow. Yeah, that was a big discussion we had at one point because it was hard to divide. Up the fixed cost of this plant, which is big, yeah, as opposed to the flow. So. It all meshes together, but it's, I think we need to keep all of this on the table as we move through this process. That's my opinion.
I I I would just say that the EDU is a pretty old method of calculating. It actually started in water fixtures, I think, but pretty old.
So I definitely could, if 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 it was the board's direction to. To move in that direction and look at it, at least the legality of it and. Is there one in particular that looked interesting to the board that they would like? Me to further the discussion of that and and frankly, have that further discussion with the city manager and and uh. The the general manager for CSD because obviously there's some coordination that has to go on with them and. Um and so if it's the board's direction to do that, I'm happy to work with the two gentlemen.
Well, let's go ahead and hear from, uh, do you have any more questions for board members? Let's go ahead and hear from the audience, um. So we have, um, how many speakers do we have tonight? Um, Emery, um, yeah, five minutes, um, please be respectful. Uh don't, you know, clap and boo, they don't have the speaker. Uh again, five minutes typically is just time enough time to. Say what you need, but typically is three. So everybody did a great job last meeting, so we'll see if we can do that again. So who's our first speaker?
Theodore Trentman.
Sorry, want everyone in the room for just a minute to think back about a hundred years ago. A little bit longer than then, people were starting to talk about building a dam. Flooding hundreds of thousands of acres or a lot of acres. A lot of people didn't even own that land. They had no idea what was gonna happen by investing. Eight eighty-six thousand dollars to build the second dam, the first one having been built in eighteen eighty-four. Jump ahead a hundred years. Here we are talking about. Saving our water so we can use that dam and create jobs and economies and. Have kids in schools and. Have livelihoods and enjoy the mountains and enjoy the lake. So when we're talking about how much this costs, we have to keep in perspective that this isn't a decision that we're. Just looking at in the moment, but we're keeping a decision going forward that has impacted all of our lives. For more than a hundred years. There's a responsibility in this room to keep this project going. This isn't about how much it costs, it's about how much it costs us for not keeping that lake full. It's depressing when we see our lake halfway full, that daily they can talk on Facebook about the lake being almost empty. It's embarrassing. And anyone who gets up here and talks about how we shouldn't keep our lake full, doesn't get what Big Bear is all about. I'm thinking back about, I used to live in a condo association and for four years I went to all these association meetings. We didn't have a security um guard in our building. We lived across the street from the state of center. Homeless people all over the place, people climbing over the walls of our condo building. And every homeowner's association I went to. I said, you know, I think we might need a security guard. It's getting worse. People are like, oh, all you rich people. And we're all homeowners in the in the meeting. I said, no, I just feel like we should do this, like we should protect our invested interests, our properties. So for four years, I was the crazy person talking about spending money on a security guard until the cleaning lady of our brick building is murdered. You know, it's really easy to talk about how we're saving money here, right? We don't have any obligation to jobs, to our posterity, to. Schools, to housekeepers, to homeowners. No, no responsibility there. Until something bad happens. I run a Facebook page on Facebook called California Drought. So I've actually been studying this for years. And it's amazing, what you find in communities is everybody's concerned about water when there's a drought. I guarantee you this room would be filled with people about how we need to do replenish Big Bear when the lake has happened. It's amazing what I've learned over the years. When it rains. All these projects that are planned, communities start to abandon them. Oh, we feel so confident. We so, we we don't need water in our lake. Look at it now. And then what happens? Slowly but surely, the lake begins to dwindle, the tourists stop coming. People start moving off the mountain because they have to close their businesses. And it's because decisions that are made in meetings like this. Don't have foresight. This isn't about how much it costs today, it's about how much it costs us for the future. This is a big decision to keep our lake full. Just go back a hundred years when they talked about building a dam. Boy, that was a crazy idea, wasn't it? But it still impacts every single person in this room today.
Charlie Booster? At the end, we'll just call you up.
All right, you worked the last meeting represented that.
I already got this started, I can. Well, that is a deep comment he made. I wish the lake was a big pool too, but I'm telling you. Uh. It's four point four inches a year this project will provide. Only four point four inches, forty-eight inches of apparition a year, so less than a tenth will be recovered. And I just think a hundred million dollars on this community is not worth it. It's ridiculous. You're planning and spending a hundred million dollars. It's ridiculous, you're planning and spending a hundred million dollars and there's such little benefit, four point four inches. I've been on the MWD board for eight years, I've listened to this thing develop, and I thought it was a great idea, Dave. When you first pitched it, it was gonna be ten, twenty million dollars. Yeah, we were gonna get all the municipalities that participate, all the bridges and everything else. But no, it turned out we'll get the EDUs increased from three oh two to six hundred and twelve dollars. Every house will have one, two, a business might have ten, twenty EDUs, it's crazy. So, here's what, couple of things, I, I read the article in the Grizzly, you know, supporters say the project will keep the lake almost filled, it's not gonna do it, four point four inches doesn't do it. So remember that, you know, so MWD has paid or has pledged six hundred thousand dollars for this project. We talked about it last year, a year before when I was on the board. We made the decision not to sign the MOU, there was too many questions, outstanding questions. In fact, we even made the statement, we don't even want the water. And now we have Bear Valley Mutual coming down, have you, you all read the letter on their comments on the EIR, I think, sent to you, very nasty. It's very hard, I don't know how you can overcome it, but Bear Valley Mutual owns the water. We don't, MWD doesn't own the water, we manage the surface, it's their water, it's not our water. And what they're doing, they've got a dam down the hill, Seven Oaks Dam, twice as big per volume as this lake. And they're waiting for us to produce this extra water so they can take that off, out of our lake. It's not the inland water, we paid two million dollars for that, it's an additional agreement they have. If it gets up to four feet or six feet in the winter, within feet high, they can take the water out, and they're just chomping their fists to do that. And it doesn't make sense for me, for that, I don't know, there's so many things still that, uh, you, you haven't, I don't even know if you have permits yet, you have any permits on this wall? House Prop two eighteen, I met that requirement, I know these guys are gonna talk about that, that's gonna be the problem. So, I just think you need to rethink this. You, you have that issue with the well, setting well within sixty feet, we're gonna have to cap it, and you're gonna have to provide water to those people, is that forever free? Will they always be able to do, use that water, and what cost them anything? That's gonna be millions of dollars a project. So, I'd like you to stop work on the project, I'd like you to rescind the EDU increases because they're scary, I have a business, I've got fifty of them, or forty of them, some of the other businesses have. My, our, if we have a house, it's one or two. And these, and go to the contributors and the grants and everything else and tell them we just can't meet the requirements that are laid on us. And I bet they'll forgive a lot of those loans. And then collect all the outstanding monies that have been committed or promised from the city, MWD, DWP, CST, and it'll probably be a wash, I don't know what you spent so far, eight million, nine million, it'll probably be a wash. But you just can't lay this on this community the way you've done it. Put it all on the EDUs and have the community pay that for the double in the next five years, and then perpetuate from the rest of their life. They can't afford it. So, um, I don't know, do you, you guys agree that four point four inches is all we're gonna get? I presented that, Rick, you and I talked about it two or three times?
More than that.
Um, that's all we're gonna get. Now, if you give us all the water in the lake, it'll be six inches, or six and a half inches, still a not a lot when evaporation is forty-eight inches a year, that's an average over the last thirty-five years. And I figured that four point four is, and lake's down eight feet, so I, that's an average. So, anyhow, please, please stop this project, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Joseph Kelly?
Joseph Kelly, president of Victory Now, it's a political action committee, and, uh, we're, we're on.
Speak up, Joe, we can't hear you.
Thank you. Uh, Joseph Kelly, president of Victory Now, it's a political action committee, and, uh, we're working in this election year. Uh, thankfully, the video of the last meeting was posted and I got to listen to what everybody said. The first hour of it was just a waste of time, it was history, lots of smoke. And this is my design, wear out the public, public is here, they're not getting paid to be here. Everybody else is getting paid to be here, and we come, and we're getting tired, and that's good on the side, supporters. So, make everybody tired, but what did come out in the history, when the project started, was what, fifty million dollars? And, uh, now we're being told, oh, we got all these grants, so now it's eighty-nine million dollars. Uh, and with the grants, it's sixty-seven million dollars, sixty-eight million dollars with the grants. Every time we get grants, the cost goes up. These grants are not helping us. It's, uh, they're outstripping the cost of the project. The, uh, um, the, a lot of great stuff came out of Director Walsh, he asked questions. Very important to ask questions, and, uh, I want you to know, this project has nothing to do with groundwater recharge. They talk about all these things, uh, Sand Canyon and everything, it has zero, zero to do with groundwater recharge. As we just said again tonight, all this project does, for eighty-nine million at least, is deliver treated water just west of, uh, Division, that's all it does. And it goes into the lake through Stanfield Marsh, and then the lake can control it. And CST gets no water, DWP gets none of that water, it's not drinking water. And, um, MWD isn't paying for the water, they're not paying for the construction of this project. MWD is not paying for maintenance and operation of the project. They use all this water, if it produces any, and then they can release it through the west end, through the dam, and it goes down Bear Creek. So what are we, what are we getting? Instead of saving the water, and it goes to the north, to Lucerne, it goes up the west. And MWD immediately gets a financial benefit of a couple million dollars because then they release water and they don't have to pay in loot money. Couple million dollars, and they can sell more, or, uh, Bear Valley Mutual down in Redlands will just take it. They will exercise the option, doesn't help us, takes the water over there, and then now we're talking about water equity. The project's been going for what, eight years, almost nine? And now we talk about it, and the best plan that anyone can come up with is all the water goes into the lake. And it costs eighty-nine million dollars, maybe more. And anything about all this recharge, the lake does not recharge the aquifer to any significant level. It's a clay bottom, that's why it's a lake. It only re- recharges aquifer if it's absolutely full and it's overflowing into the aquifer. There's no reach groundwater recharge in this project, that's a fact. And they mentioned in part of the water equity, that there are letters of intent, CST, uh, and, uh, uh, the city and DWP, they have these letters of intent from nineteen, or twenty twenty-one, and it was just renewed again. I sat in a meeting at CST and the chairman of that committee said that those letters of intent were just to be used, they only said that, they had no meaning, they were just gonna be used so we could get more grants. Well, that's subterfuge, and when you're using subterfuge like that with the federal government, that's called fraud. And I'll be addressing that in another venue, but that's a federal offense, and anybody who submitted those fake letters of intent, okay, it's gonna be investigated, and more fake letters of intent are useless.
Tom, sit down.
Oh, why not?
Yeah, it's your turn.
Well, I'm not gonna say thank you because that's not for you, except for you three over here. At the last meeting, Rick Harry said that he thought that there were more people that wanted the program than not.
Beep up.
Beep app.
Um, sorry, do, does my time get to start again, because? Anyway, start my time over, please. At the last meeting, Rick Harry said that he thought there were more people that wanted this program. I believe there are not, there are more that do not want the program. There are a lot of questions and complications that were brought up at the last meeting and not answered, thank you, guys. Candy asked, if we need to have a vote, yes, we do, I, I say, I say, I say, yes, we do. The only fair way to put this project is on the voting ballot and let the taxpayers decide whether they want it or not. None of the major players have signed contracts, this is what I think that you were saying, because I can't hear half the time. None of the major part, players have signed contracts approving this project. I believe the argument was what percentage each organization was gonna pay, Borrowa, CDS, DWP, and Bear Mountain. For Bear Mountain, who, who pays what? We, oh wait, wait, wait. We know who's gonna pay, we the taxpayers, it is my understanding, in preparation for the cost, they raised our taxes to get, to get ready, only two hundred and fifty dollars a year. I just got my standby letter, and by the way, I have to pay nine hundred dollars plus, and plus I have to pay my, my property taxes. Just a standby check. What's gonna happen when the debt goes up to a hundred and fifty million dollars? The costs are not stated in Borrowa, Borrowa presentation beyond seventy-seven million dollars. No mention about increased operations, personnel repairs, maintenance, interest, debit service on the borrowing, um, the RO filters and the, and the dispose, and the toxic disposal of them, that's not even talked about in the cost. We all, all to be paid by ratepayers who have not been asked if they want this, or even if they do disagree on it, that's why we need to have a vote. Today, total, the to- today, the total market share of RO membrane elements is for various purposes is about this, about a million US dollars, boy, I'd like to get part of that. Every time I turn around, there's more cost, more cost, more cost, and more cost. The more I investigate this, more cost I find. There are hidden costs everywhere, does that surprise anybody here about the hidden cost? Oh, no. We have not been told the truth about the real cost, period. This project is just too risky for our community. This program has only been built in major cities with thousands and thousands of taxpayers to share the bill. Who's gonna share it here, twenty-two thousand people, wow, well, actually, there's only eleven thousand houses. You, Borrowa, not being transparent, you are not being transparent, or this project is just over your heads. Remember, you took an oath to protect the people that serve. Regardless, ignorance of the law is no excuse. Each one of you are now being warned right now that you can be held personally liable for these expenses. The bureaucrats, bureaucrats leading this madness, I don't know what that would be, see no downside for the starting something that might cost tax ratepayers more than one hundred million dollars and end up exposing the end use of water project, of the water project to unknown risks and no water at all to safely use for yourselves or us. Visit Big Bear, bring your own water. The fact is, nobody knows how much this will cost or who will pay the foolish and irresponsibilities for the foolish, foolishness and responsibility. This is how a country gets to be thirty-four trillion dollars in debt and becomes unlivable. The actual bill, in my opinion, will be in excess of a hundred and fifty million dollars. This, that is ludicrous, you and your families, regeneratious income, will be paying for this project forever if it is not stopped. And what is this, a hundred and fifty million dollars, my estimate is? For two to four inches of lake water a year, that's a half of a storm. Thompson, we the people of Big Bear, and that's not all I have to say, and we the people of BigBear.com, and I could talk for you for an hour, thank you.
Tim Walcott?
Uh, my name is Tim Walcott, I've been a consultant, um, in the US government. I've worked with presidents, senators, congressmen, none of you guys know that. Um, also worked as a consultant with wastewater treatment plants, um, out of Orange County, and, um, I just can't see where this is gonna help anybody, rarely do I ever agree with Charlie this time. But I've sat here and I've listened to this, I've seen some of the documentation, and there's no way, but why don't we just cut to the chase? Let's just do a vote on the people, but let's come up with some real costs. What this is gonna cost every rate there, because this is a little bit insane. And to raise the lake two to four inches, let's say four point four, best case scenario, as Charlie said, for what? I, I mean, we're losing forty-eight inches, so to get a couple sunny days extra out of this? I tell you, you know, so Borrowa wants to pump this all the way across the lake, but nobody's talking about, you know, the microplastics that are gonna be dumped into the lake. Um, that's a big concern, the forever chemicals which are gonna come out of the pipes. Um, another big concern, and if you're gonna charge our aquifers with this, which we do not have a shortage of water, because nobody's been able to figure out how much water is below us, and by the way, there's more primary water and, uh, on the planet than there is ocean water. So primary water is the real water we should be drinking. And I find it kind of ridiculous, and I do lecture about this, by the way. Um, so, I, I've been, I've had the seventeen fastest video ever seen on YouTube until YouTube removed me and they didn't want the real information out. I lecture over to a million people a week on Telegram of what's really coming. And a lot of the things you guys don't know what is coming. So, you know, there's a HARP system that the US military created, and they can funnel and create storms anyplace they want without creating any microplastics, without creating any forever chemicals. So, I think you guys are a little bit premature in this one. If you don't know what's coming, you guys are gonna be really scared. By the way, when you come up with legal dark jargon, that we had an attorney, a bar association attorney, bar association stands for British Accredited Registry. That attorney did not take an oath to protect the citizens of the United States. They took an oath under admiralty law to protect the crown of England. I've said that to Rick Harry a long time ago. Um, so I said it to the planning commission. You guys need to understand, that is an act of treason. You cannot, look it up, you wanna challenge me, any day, we'll bring everybody in. You wanna challenge me in a competition, go for it. Everyone's failed so far, but that's what it stands for, bar association, look it up. Law of the water, that's why your name is always capitalized, get it? You're part of the corporation, but anyway, I'm sidetracking. So stop using legal and use lawful, find a law attorney, because that's the system we're gonna be in. Okay, so, you guys gotta understand what's coming, we have an opportunity. The country's gonna flip, we're going into martial law, and HARP system's gonna be activated. We are going to be able to generate storm wherever we want, on any place on the planet. Why do you think there, all this drought is happening? You think it's just mythical? It's not. Look back at history, the longer you run out a system over the years, it repeats itself. Nature repeats itself, everything does. You guys are missing the point here, so it's all coming. That's why, whether you like Trump or not, he says we are going to activate the six thousand patents that have been released from the public, that they didn't want us to have. How do you think they're gonna do all this?
To retract your comments toward the.
What's that mean? So, anyway, I only have thirteen seconds left, but the point is, we're gonna be able to do this, you don't need to run this out, just don't. just don't go in Big Bear, you know, Baldwin Lake. And let's do a real vote of the actual people paying the bill. Okay? So, you guys don't own the water, the people do. Okay? All these agencies are owned by the people.
Thank you.
Speaker.
In 2011, I applied for a job in water conservation at the City of Big Bear Lake Department of Water. As part of my research, which I brought up in my interview then, I came across this recycled water project and spoke out about how interesting and important it was. That was 13 years ago, and after a decade in water conservation and project management, I feel the same today. I spent a total of nearly nine years with DWP promoting water conservation in this community. I answered questions from countless residents and homebuyers who wanted this project approved. It improves home values for the entire valley and boosts revenue for businesses. I now work with communities who are literally running out of water and instituting water neutrality projects in order to meet their water needs. Yes, we have enough water to support our current population, due to the plumbing standards and decades of hard fought conservation efforts. That doesn't mean this project isn't necessary. Some of us weren't around in 2003, when this community was consuming water at a volume that was nearing our maximum perennial yield. That amount is what we can safely withdraw from the aquifer. The DWP and CSD have not conducted a comprehensive water supply availability study in nearly 20 years. We cannot say with 100% confidence that the maximum perennial yield of this basin has changed in the last two decades. Those of you served by DMD and DWP in this room, I envy you. You turn on the tap and the water is there. That's not the case everywhere in this country, this state, or even this community. I can tell you I know people whose wells have run dry. I can tell you that while we are not connected to any municipal system involving the lake, we are 100% susceptible to water quality issues that may be attributable to lowering water tables. I can tell you we are entirely susceptible to a single hall water provider in this valley that can close shop any day, who can double our rates with absolutely no regulatory oversight, and who can refuse service if they don't agree with their political opinions. They have no repercussion or regulatory control on who they serve and how much they charge. While this project does not currently include a retard involving the lake, I can only hope that these boards, CSD, DWP, and Barwa, will have the foresight to approve a project that may someday be needed to serve me too. I can tell you that while you may not think this project impacts you or is not worth the cost, it does, and it is. I would gladly pay our share of cost if we were given the opportunity involved the lake. If you build a home, you're responsible for grading to keep the water on your property. The same should apply to our watershed. This water should be kept in our valley. I bet most households in this valley pay more for their cellphone bills and their television service providers than they do for the most important resource that we have on this planet, which is our water. Water requires reliability and sustainability to support economic vitality, recreation, tourism, the jobs that you have, that I have, your customers have, your neighbors, and your friends. Water supports the health and wellness of every single one of us, our local plant and animal life, and more. I beg of you, don't kill this project. It will only get more expensive and more crucial, if not getting any more affordable. Hindsight is 2020, but foresight is priceless. Make good decisions for today and every future resident visiting this valley. Thank you.
Speaker.
Daniel Gilbranson.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, foresight is priceless, and that's what this project is gonna cost, it's gonna be priceless. For the amount of what's gonna be charged for the water, the amount of money that's gonna be spent on things that you don't even know what the costs are. So, once again, like we do over in Big Bear Lake, we, it's a, a work in progress. Instead of having all the facts, knowing what the costs are, what the timeline is, it's just, let's just go along, it's a good idea, let's just do it. We don't care how much it's gonna cost, because we can raise your property taxes, we can raise the bill. We have no clue of what it's gonna cost. We're doing the same thing in Big Bear Lake. An example, Castle Rock Parking Lot. 30 parking spaces, $45 million. But that's not counting attorneys. Is your attorney, uh, BBK by chance? They have their tentacles throughout the state. So, yeah, it's gonna cost a lot of money. The system we have now, it works down there, but what we have, like the sidewalks of San Francisco, it's nothing but a pile of dog crap. Our liberal, smart politicians can't even keep Nordstroms in San Francisco, hell, they can't even keep In-N-Out in Oakland. And then you, they, you expect good things to happen from government agencies? What a joke. It's nothing but a joke. All you have to do is look no further than our disposal in, in Big Bear Lake. Another government mandate, bring in 15, 20,000 trash cans. Pick them up. I'm trying to find out where those trash cans are. Oh, they're in storage out there. No, they're not. They either resold them, took them down to Arston, cut them up. Now I give an example of, of government policy.
Can you keep, uh, keep your comments towards the item?
I'm talking about government screwups, and this is another government screwup. You have no clue of how much this is gonna end up costing. And that's what I'm talking about with the same mandate that was just done in Big Bear Lake. All these projects, you can't get the truth. You can't get the truth before, you can't get the truth after. You know, you take an oath to the, uh, Constitution, or the state, or this, that, but you don't take an oath to tell the truth, because you know you don't have to tell the truth. None of you actually care if you tell the truth, because you don't, you're not gonna go to jail, you're not in front of a court. Back in the 60s, when you go to Mammoth, you always say flush twice, because LA needed all the water it could get. Then it was a joke. Now, up here, it's not a joke. You guys might want us to flush three times. It's still, no matter how you look at it, it's toilet to tap. Even, even in the state's handbook, it's turning sewage into a pot of, bottle of water supplies delivered to homes and businesses. It's to be mixed with aquifers, used for irrigation and other non-drinking purposes. I don't see the clarity that you have. There's other things in here that the state is mandating. Because I don't think you guys, or anybody, knows the difference on water standards. They have some maximum contaminant levels. I'd like to see what some of those are. So, why? So, you had said that it's a complex problem. Yeah, you're damn right, it's a complex problem. It's a cluster. It's another cluster that this little valley is bringing on. I see it time after time. Thank you.
Randall Potts.
Good evening. Randy Potts, Big Bear Lake. My comments tonight are mine solely as an individual and a resident of this valley. My comments tonight are also informed with conversations I've had recently with all of our professional water managers in this valley. And if you haven't yet had a chance to talk to them to get better understanding of the project, you have a chance soon. Replenish or perish. I am grateful to those local leaders who had the vision to form the Big Bear Area Regional Wastewater Agency, Barwa, 50 years ago, so that most of us don't have to incur the burden of a septic system or resort to outhouses. Barwa's sole responsibility is to treat our wastewater. For decades, it has pumped this wastewater into the Serne Valley, and so far, it has exported over $35 billion, with a B, gallons of our valley's precious water to the desert. Our only source of water in Big Bear falls from the sky. And even if it were available from a distant source, importing water to our high elevation would be prohibitively expensive. It makes sense to keep our water in our valley. Continuing to export our limited water is environmentally, regulatorily, and economically unsustainable. The replenish Big Bear project started over seven years ago to do just that. In that time, there have been over 40 related public meetings, even in open house, as they have carefully planned and tested an upgraded facility that will treat our wastewater to required standards, standards that are better than drinking water, and reuse it here in Big Bear. This ongoing process has been open, transparent, legal, and fair, and part of the public record for those who don't recall. Until recently, Barwa's member agencies, the county, the city, and CSD, have approved all related actions to this project, which include a significant amount of grant awards and very low interest rate loans, plus a fair and equitable sharing of costs by all ratepayers, with the same wastewater model we have agreedably operated under four years. Keeping our water local will ultimately benefit us many ways. This water can support recreation through snowmaking and higher lake levels, but ultimately, and most importantly, it will make its way into the ground and recharge our precious aquifers. It is important to know that Barwa is not responsible for how our domestic groundwater or the lake water gets used. That is the jurisdiction of other local entities like MWD, DWP, CSD, and businesses. Barwa's responsibility stops at the end of the outfall pipe, and those other entities step up to figure out fair and equitable end uses of our water. We, the taxpayers, have already incurred almost $10 in costs for replenish Big Bear. Major funding, including our parcel tax contribution, has already been secured. We have bought the ticket and the train has left the station. Because of recent inactions, we now risk our water security by derailing the project and wasting our $10 million investment. Failure to move forward would be irresponsible, maybe even reckless, and would create the very gundalgal sun fear. Warming environmental regulations will soon require we better treat our exported wastewater anyway. I am hopeful our current leaders possess the prudence, the vision, and the will to keep this critical project on track. If they don't, it will be a costly mess, and we'll all have to pay even more for it. Water is our life, water is our safety, water is our economy. We ski and boat on it, tourists are drawn to it, and we admire it when it sparkles in our lake. Water is why we live here. Keep our water in our valley and keep replenish Big Bear moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Ellen Parton. I think she left. Any other members of the board?
Thank you. I'm Max Riven, a resident and business owner of Big Bear Lake. I'm 100% support this project. Um, I always thought this was about stabilizing the lake. Um, it is one of our main tourist attractions, so I really hope Charlie's figures are wrong. Um, I normally do agree with Charlie, so, um, the, the only question that I do have, and I do question the value of CDC. Um, and I question, you know, who is paying for this? Is, is the, 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 the big benefit for this, of course, is the lake, which is gonna be the businesses of Big Bear Lake. I think we should be paying, I should be paying. I think the lakefront owners should have a huge stake in this, they should be paying. Um, and, you know, MWP. So, that's, I mean, that's, that's my only comment, is, is the people that are gonna benefit the most should be footing this bill. Uh, I would really hate to see, um, retired, low-income people from Big Bear City, um, paying this, so, thank you.
Gina?
Oh, let's hand you them. Gina, why is Big Bear City? I don't have a position on this, because I've been really derelict in recent years about keeping up with water, so, um, but I, I know that before we had replenish Big Bear, we did have what is, you know, lovingly called the Toilet to Tap Program that was introduced before. It's just peaceful, you know? Um, it was called Recharge. So, my understanding, when Mr. Lawrence came up with this, let's put it in the lake, I went, yay, I like that, I'm okay with it in the lake, I think. Until I know more. And now I'm hearing also recharge the aquifers. And I'm hearing confusing information about recharging the aquifer, because if we're putting it in the, oh, okay, I think I know how. Because if DWP or CSD takes that water, they might put it directly into the aquifer. That I don't like. I think I'm not comfortable with that. And I think a lot of people are uncomfortable with that, and I just wanna say that I noticed. Um, when I came in, I noticed these little bottles that say replenish Big Bear. And honestly, until I just got a bottle and I can see through it that it's the same water you're all drinking, I did wonder why nobody was drinking it. Nobody here took one of these to drink, I think because we thought it might actually be the our own water, right? But you all have the water, it's actually the same water.
You never know.
Oh, I'm trying to get more involved in this project. I know that I'm late finding out about this project, and I apologize for that, but now that I know about it, um, first off, we are a republic, and, um, and I don't feel that as a republic that citizens should have to pay these absorbent fees for all these taxes and stuff that you guys have been charging. I'm on the well, and I'm happy to put in a septic tank, because I don't wanna pay these fees. And I have a big enough lot to get away with that. I actually think that we should have septic tanks all over Big Bear and have all the leach lines like they do on the east, like they do on the east coast, so that it goes back down in our aquifer, and that's how it's been done for centuries, leach lines. And you could put those tanks underground so the water doesn't evaporate. You could put big tanks out there in Baldwin Lake, dig down, put leach lines in it, and it'd be there for how many years? It would last a long time, it would fill our aquifers, you could put them in. I, I don't mind water going up and using it if it goes in the septic tank, unlike the percolator. I don't think that's right. I think it should go down in the ground and it should leach down. First off, we own the water, we should continue to own the water. I mean, even in Big Bear and our aquifers, that's what's gonna last 100 years. Yeah. Um, I'm a dreamer. I like to dream and come up with new ideas, and so I'm all for the dreaming. But this dream needs to be dead. This vision isn't cost-effective, which you're trying to do, which you're trying to saddle a community with. It's a, it died. And also, what about the ones that don't wanna be, are we allowed to opt out of the system? Because I would. Um, I, I like the idea of the golf course having water up there, that's pretty cool, that that will soak down back into the aquifer. But they said they don't need it, because we have the snow, the rain, those are awful. But they said they don't need it because we have the snow that already fills our aquifer. I have a lot of notes. Keep ownership of our water. Water equity. I would like to know why we'd be in charge of square footage for our houses? Because I have a big house that I'm most of the time the only one living there. I think it should be a per-person occupancy for sewer charges, not a square footage of somebody's house. I think that's totally wrong, a square footage of a house. Why should I be charged more than somebody who has a smaller house that might have multiple people, a lot more people living in it, if it's for the sewer? Why is the cost being transferred to other people all the time? Let's see. I guess that's it. My notes are all messed up. I'll try to get more organized next time.
Reverend Speaker from the audience.
I promised myself I wouldn't do this. My name is Speaker Holt, and I promised myself I wouldn't speak. But there's been a lot of things that I just have to say. Mr. Brewster's analysis is fundamentally flawed. I'm not going to try to describe it, but it's flawed. You have to think of this in cumulative terms, not annual terms. And the analysis that has been done by the Water District is far back to seventy-seven. It's been redone multiple times. It's a cumulative effect. They will keep the lake four feet higher when it's at its low point. That's the critical time. What you're worried about differences on a year-to-year basis is not the way you look at it. It's the critical times when you're in a drought, it'll be four feet higher, and that is significant. Okay. The one, okay, we talked about putting in septic tanks. I'm not wanting to go there. The assumption that a lot of people are making, arguing against this project, is the assumption that what we're doing now, we can do forever. Okay, we've been pumping our wastewater to Lucent Valley for almost fifty years, and the assumption is we'll be able to do it for the next fifty years. I firmly believe that is a bad assumption, okay? One thing that I learned at the last meeting that I didn't know was that the Mojave Water Agency is planning to put in a spreading basin to put in drinkable water right next to our property in Lucent Valley. Okay? That's going to shine a huge spotlight on BARWA's operation there. Okay, and the fact that our waste discharge permit allows us to put nutrients and other things into their groundwater basin. We're worried about putting it into ours. We've been dumping it for fifty years into theirs, and it has consequences. I've also learned at some point that the Colorado River Regional Water Quality Control Board is looking at the water quality in the vicinity of our facilities down in Lucent Valley and are concerned. Okay? That is a significant thing. Another thing that I've learned, that if we don't do this, if you abandon this project, okay? What will likely happen is that the regional board will come back when your waste discharge permit is up for review and mandate tertiary treatment with nutrient room. And the cost of that is roughly seventy percent of this project's cost. We could wind up paying seventy percent, and the water still goes to Lucent Valley. It's the thirty percent on top that allows us to keep it up here. Okay? To me, that's a significant consideration that this board needs to think about. Thank you.
Now, I'll bring it back to the board for replenish model session.
Hi, Tom Jax. I came to you guys last meeting. I'm relatively new to the meeting the last four, five years. And I, you know, love the lake, and I hate seeing it low. And I learned a lot of things in the last meeting that I was unaware of. I've been relatively new to this project. And that was that, you know, a lot of these legal agreements were out in place that we wanted to see and provide. But this is about, you're arguing over something that doesn't actually exist yet. So a letter from ten people aren't going to spend the money on a complicated legal agreement if they don't know something. That seems manageable by just committing on paper. It sounds like everybody's on board with this project. My real big takeaway that I was unaware of is that the bill is coming due one way or another. The, you know, you can't tell people their rates won't go up. I was racking my brain. I was like, "Why are people really against this?" And the whole number one, the only reason I can think of is it's expensive. It is expensive. It costs money. No one likes seeing their bills go up. I get it. But you can't tell people their rates won't go up, because there's already ten million dollars spent. It's like building a house, and you've got the foundation and the frame up, and you're like, "Well, it's getting pretty expensive. I guess..." "I guess I don't want to pay for it." Well, you're going to have to pay for what's been built already. You know, at some point, we're going to need to build a new treatment plant. And what the previous speaker was saying, what I heard, is that these water quality standards are going to go up. So what happens when that mandate comes down? And then you're forced to make a decision and pay for the money. So it's like, we might as well get something out of this. We might as well get our water. We might as well have a full lake. You know, the most devastating thing I took from the last meeting was that if we blow this deal up, Big Bear looks like a joke. Big Bear looks like a clown show. So when the next mandated construction project, whether it be the water treatment plant, or a bridge, or a roadway, or a park bench, we go looking for federal money, they're going to go, "Well, last time, you know, we did business with you guys, you walked away at the goal line. You guys mumbled at the goal line. You're at the back of the line. We won't get money for anything." So that's, to me, the most devastating thing. This project goes away. Now, I heard the arguments, and I feel bad for folks on the lower-income folks, retirees on fixed incomes. I come from Los Angeles, where there are multiple waivers for folks that are low-income and fixed retirees. There are ways to work around these problems. There are. You know, I get it. Inflation sucks. I don't like handles much as anybody else. But the reality is, we have to work it out. It's too important not to do it. So, you know, I'm an optimist. I love building things, and you guys have a chance to be a hero. Like the other gentleman said, when they built the dam, I don't think you... You know, people, the great things in our lives were built on people taking risks and taking chances. There was no sense in anything of progress, whether it's flying an airplane, or putting a person on the moon, or building your iPhone. I mean, those were all massive risks and investments, but they work sometimes, and they work oftentimes. So, you know, this is Big Bear. Think big, you know, dream big, and be big. Again, you can't look at the people that are coming to you and saying, "I want to pay more on my bills," and saying that's not going to happen. It's just not reality. So there's ways to work it out, and I hope you are able to work it out. It's too important. Thank you.
We have an item of recommendation in front of us. Something isn't adding to the conference. Suggestion on how we should do it.
I understand the group's lead published a poll, and the results were almost seventy-one percent in favor. What I don't know is how the question was posed. Because if a person is in favor of keeping the water in the valley, it might not be in favor of this specific project. So I don't know what that seventy, seventy-one percent means. What I do know is this project cannot possibly make us drought-proof. As the drought gets bad, we cut back the amount of water you can use in your house. Less to flush, less ends up out here, less to treat. So reality is, that won't work. There seems to be some confusion as to what a full lake needs. Obviously, if the lake's way down, then anything you add to it has a greater benefit. But at the very height, even if we put all the water in the lake, none in the same canyon, it could not fill this lake. Those are measurable things. You've also brought up things that are not measurable, the benefit to property values, the benefits to recreation, to beautifying Big Bear, to the happy little guppies in the sea. I do feel obliged to listen to every comment, whether I agree or not. And even if the person calls me a liar, cheat, and thief, as some have thinly concealed. I asked before about commitments. Something that tells us what the MWD, what slopes, what all these people are going to do. We have been told we can go up to twenty-five percent ramp. That's correct. Against federal. If we get state money that hasn't originated as federal, we could get more. We've also been told we have other stakeholders in the valley, such as Fishing Game, Visit Big Bear, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. I don't see those stakeholders rushing to give us money. So it really boils down to how much risk we are willing to take to borrow for the future. When I started watching this eight, ten years ago, yes, I have, still have a manual that says it was going to be fifty million. And yes, I understand that eighty-six point seven, take twenty-two back off of that for contingencies, et cetera. It has still grown and grown, and now I find out that's not even for the whole project. It's only for a stage. I also hear that we can't proceed because people don't want to make the commitment. If they don't know, it's going to go ahead. It can't go ahead if we don't have commitments. Sick with it. I understood that you were going to be hard-pressed to get much response from last week to this meeting. But we're still left with some really thin commitments. However honest, upright, trustworthy Reverend Braden Loyal you may be, just say back to my favorite, "Trust me." That is really scary. And if you want me to commit to a loan of fifty-two million only, I've really got to see better, better than what is being put forth. I want to see a progress, because you can't admit you cannot come off the concrete answers on some reason.
Kind of just as a poll again, survey in the room, seven not in favor of the project, eight in favor of the project. And I know everybody who is here is passionate about it. Obviously, equity is a big concern with this, and I think that some of this is addressed in what you have here. I mean, what I'm hoping for is that we have enough support, because we have the time now, because we know that this loan is not going to expire for another six or eight months, to try to work everything out. I also am optimistic, and I have the feeling progress is being made with letters of commitment as we speak right now. And it's great to have representatives here from the organizations who'll be working on most of those agreements. At this point right now, this is way too early to kill a program. And again, we have this six months to eight months that we can work on these sort of things to keep moving forward. And some of the questions are very legitimate. A lot of it is just very confusing. I've been working on this for a while, and when I hear some of the arguments going back and forth, it's weird. I understand how easy it is to get confused with this project. But again, hopefully, the bottom line is that this board, this community, has vision for the future. We can look at where we're at today, but the most important thing is continuing to look to the future of where we are, where we're going. And the people who actually initially built this plant had to have vision and understand where the community was going with growth to be able to do this. Otherwise, we would have septic systems. We would have cesspools. We would not have what we have here, which is a four-hundred-million-dollar plan. And what we're looking at doing is, we're looking at improving this plant. And if you have vision, you can look in the future, and you can see that it's going to improve, not only the water quality, but it's going to improve. I'm convinced our way of life here in Big Bear, because if some of the theories of extended droughts, if that continues, we are going to be in very bad shape in the future. Is this going to save us? No, but it is certainly going to make it much easier to survive in the future and have this wonderful community that we all get to live in. So we need to keep this going until we can't. There's a lot of things on the table, a lot of work that still needs to be done, but I'm optimistic. I'm hearing things that make it sound like these agreements, these letters of commitments are forthcoming.
I agree with one of the speakers that the cost of this equals trips to Starbucks, or, you know, paying for extra cable. But that is my choice. I still feel strongly that this should have been put to a vote of the people. I was dismayed, because I was at a luncheon last week, the day after our BARWA meeting, and I was kind of polling people to see what they thought about the project. I talked to fifteen different people from different walks of life in Big Bear, and nobody really knew about it. They knew a little bit about it. They really didn't know that much about it, but the thing that they wanted to know is how much it was going to cost them. So I would, I would like to see, I have actually more questions written down than I had from last week. I would like to see the conversation continue. I still would like to see a vote, but I don't know if that's feasible. So I would, I would like to make a motion that we proceed with a study session with CSD, City Council. All of the agencies would be present. I would like to see the city of Big Bear Lake take the lead in organizing this and, you know, opening up the conversation to maybe more answers than questions.
I'd like to second that motion. Where's the second, the backward discussion for the board and comments on the motion? The roll call, please.
Vice Chair Herrick? Director Russo?
Just so everybody knows, like, I still, I mean, that's a good idea, but it's been, what, seven or nine years that it's been going on? And like last, I don't remember, last week, whenever we had our last meeting, supposedly things were going to get squared away, and I hear the exact same things we have. We're going to, we're going to do it really interested. We're going to sign, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, I'm going to say no, because I'm not sure that is ever going to get done. I mean, I like to think positive, but if it's been going on for so long that it's like, there should have been someone that says, "Yeah, let's do it now," and all those entities should have signed up by now, I think. So, no.
Director Sedgwick?
Hi.
Director Walsh?
I surprised some people last time because I voted to continue the discussion. Just as I want everybody in the room to have their chance to speak, staff, and other agency executives, I'd like to see you have a chance. This doesn't have a threshold, though. It doesn't have a sunset. And so as Mr. Russo said, this would just be a... And so as Mr. Russo said, this, this would just be a perpetuation or a less problem. I will, however, vote in favor if we can set some kind of timeline. We don't have eight months. I understand we have six months before this vaporizes for financial, right?
So the six months is, I have funding for the next eight months.
Ah, sure.
So I have funding until November. I am saying September because if everybody decides to move forward with the Whitfield loan, it takes me about three months to get that funding in place, so that way I can continue to cover bills. So that's why I've given you the six months because that seems like a, a reasonable number where after six months, here we will run out of paying bills in November, of money to pay bills in November. Does that make sense?
Regret your mind.
Okay.
But yes, my vote was that we, I would support Segovia's motion. All right.
Chair Miller?
All right.
Motion passes.
Here everyone, thank the audience. We're gonna move on to the, uh, Senator Herrick.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff is that I think. Hey, what's happening? I'm trying. Help, help, help me out. Yes, you are. If you're in bed, it might be less than. It's simple to do. Yeah. I said, right. There you go. I will take it from there. So I, yeah. My kids. I really. They are. Yeah. I mean, I really. I mean, I really. I mean, I really. I mean, I really. I'm not. I'm with it. That will be. I don't know. I'm absolutely. I mean, I really. This is not. I thought. I thought. I'm around that. Yeah. That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking. I'm thinking. I'm thinking. I'm thinking. Yeah. I'm thinking. Yeah. He's thinking. He's thinking. He's thinking. I think he's using that. I'm. I think. Right. It's true. Right. Yeah. 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 Wait. And that's. And that's. They're. Yes. They're. Russell. Was. His ability. Like. Yeah. Goes. But. Building. Thank you. You know, and there's no. Great. He's. But. Forty-seven dollars. Right. And, and you got a. It's like. One. I guess. That's. Basically. It's. Sometimes. So what is the question? Uh, yeah. You're best. But when we got. So. Uh. I'm trying. Uh, then. We got. Eighteen months. I think. I, I swear. I can't remember. But in. The waters is. Breathe. I mean. Your. If you stand. Uh, I can read you. Here's the. Get better. That's true. In the. I'm saying. And all that. And then all. But I, I can. I. To. Break out a piece. And. Exactly. I invite you. Most. Loud. Make. Look at me if we're not. Down. We're. Coming. She's saying, I'm not saying someone's like, don't just talk. Come on. So. Sixty. It'll be. It's not. It's. Well, because no one really gets in touch, that's what I'm saying. I'm gonna be. And it's. I'm. It's like. Richard Simmons. Yeah. Why? Going against. Being sure that we. Something. That. That. He needed. What's. They want. I'm saying. I know. I know. It's a lot. I'm not. We said. It's like. So it doesn't ever, you know. We're, we're in the same. Like. Grand. They were with us for seven months. We had with their mom. Uh, lessons. Uh, already guys going. Right now. Uh, they're out for four days, so. And we just will talk about their new house. We don't care. Um, and they moved out. It's two months ago. It happens. It's gonna say, cause sometimes. As I was. Back. Yeah. It's like. Yeah. I'm telling you. It's like. We haven't done them. You know. But. Yeah. That's right. And. We're just always brought up. Richard. It's everyone, so if I talk to each other. My. Single wife is. God. I just. We are. We're. And we would. Say. Yeah. And I just. Right. Okay. Same. But yeah. Yeah. He's, he's uh. Trying, uh, you know. I think it's like, uh, five hours away. Hmm. I would face that. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. It's. That's not. I was. Yeah. Yeah. Well, this is. Right. But you can. It's. Get a car to see. But it's. Like that. So. Well, one is. They're talking. They're. So. I'm challenging. So. They're. Yeah, you know what? This is. Those. We literally had by uh. This is the fire. Feel like. Beyond. Uh. We're both unfortunate. Well, they're there for three quarters of the day. Because. Like. Seventy percent of. Special. Well. So are these. Happening. So. So we. So. You can give them. She's. I think. Share. That's. Sorry. I think. I think. Harry. That's. That's my. I'm all. I guess. Uh, you know, make sure we're getting. You know. They. That's. How long you did report is. I pay too. Uh, exactly where it's at. And they. Then they. Martin. I appreciate. Yeah. Right. Second. You know. See. Thank you. Is it? All. Same. We're. Uh, I really. Like. Well. The. Start song. Because. Maybe. But. I can tell you. The. That's. Oh. And. Oh. So. I. I. Get that. See later. Yeah, tell her, we tell everybody. So. So. Records. And you. Always. You don't have to be right. You know. But also. All. Speaking. And. This. Uh. But. I'm. I'm. Um. I'm. I don't. Show. I'm. What is in there? She's. I think. I think. I'm. 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 And. What? You know. Yeah.
Did he, did he get?
Ha ha. You're. Sorry. Okay. Are you. Red? I will. Oh, yeah. Respect. Thank you. People. Yeah, she's, she's.
Getting.
All right. Great. Thank you. Um. Well, an item, uh, uh, well, we're an item on the agenda that's after the, uh, uh, actually number. Oh, you want. And. Um, I wish you. What are going to go? We begin. I do want to do. And we. I'd like to make the motion, we move to any of. You just. Back at that. Do you?
So the motion by Herrick, the second by.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Herrick?
Aye.
Director Russo?
Aye.
Director Segovia?
Aye.
Director Walsh?
Aye.
And Chairman.
Aye. All right. I, uh, the resolution. Governing Board of Big Bear Area Regional Wastewater Agency expressing appreciation to the net vote for dedicated service of the members. That's.
Is there a vote? It's not, I didn't hear any call for public comment.
No, wait, this was just a move to item up on the agenda. We're just changing the orders.
Changing the order.
All right.
So she can go home. So she can go. Did you, did you want to read the, the resolution?
Okay.
Hold it up. Oh, see here. And.
Where Mr. Netbo has served as a member of the governing board of Big Bear Area Regional Wastewater Agency, representing the city of Big Bear Lakes and Travis Fifth, Chief of twenty twenty-one. Nor is this vote has been basically a dedicated member of the governing board, has been instrumental in the Chinese information and operations of the agency's wastewater treatment plant disposal projects in Big Bear. And this vote is dedicated service of Focker, uh, Focker Valley, and then an inspiration to this governing board as well as commuting to the Big Bear Valley. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing board, the Big Bear Area Regional Wastewater Agency as falls and memberside governing boards do hereby honor this net vote for his fair service as a member of the governing board and their dedicated leadership. And. And that's the main thing. Would you? Would you?
Thank you. Thank you. Um. The, the two things that I would say about borrowers, so everybody asking where my favorite place is in the Big Bear Valley, it's actually Barlow. The, it sounds crazy, but the sewer, the wastewater and the treatment plant, the efficiency, the. It's just awe inspiring as far as the structure goes. And then the other comment, I remember Jennifer McKellar, uh, Wes told me, she's like, I gotta make sure the details are because the net's on the board. So those are like the two things to say about. I have learned from all of you and I appreciate all your work and I'm. And.
Thank you for serving. And my. Then I'm, I'm not, if you want to like you for your service on the board. But if I don't care, Chuck, over here, if you cross the comment. All right. Oh, oh. We went to ten eight. Yeah, we went on to say eight. Uh, resolution of the governing board of Big Bear, we can wait till I clarify the fiscal. Uh, your twenty twenty-five search standby or immediate available to be charged.
So before you use a resolution to confirm this standby fee for this year, this year, twenty twenty-five, these fees are charged to owners of vacant or improved parcels located within two hundred feet of a member agencies who remain that are not connected to that sewer system. These fees have not changed from the prior year, and I will bring any questions.
Yeah, again, I just.
I thought that this plan came about because the state mandated the whole valley had to go on sewers. And yet, there are still people who aren't on the sewer system? Yeah, there are, I think about three thousand parcels. They're on a standby fee and it's, you know, about, I think it's about a thousand in CSD's area, about eleven hundred in the city still of undeveloped parcels that have not connected to the sewer. I don't remember. I developed, I can understand. But if somebody's got a house and it's everything. Oh, no, they're required by, by, by health, uh, statute. If one's available. If one's available to them, they have to hook to it, yes. For which they pay the grand sum of twenty or thirty dollars. Your standby charge to make sure if, if it's, when it becomes available or when they. When they. The lines until they hope that. Okay. Thank you. And just to clarify, as a member, I asked this question. I'll just repeat it again, this cannot be changed without major, uh, rewrite of. Anything we do. Yeah, we cannot change this. It's. It's a.
So you have to decide your why it's only twenty or thirty dollars is because it's not likely to do about it. So. Well, it'd be difficult to not discuss.
It's difficult.
Not possible.
Yeah.
You're right, very, very, probably costs us more in the long run changes than for the benefit of when you change, so.
If anything was right in front of us so we could rubber stamp every year. It's just.
So. Uh, never. We have a motion. Oh, excuse me. Public care. A little of public care.
Just public comment on this link.
Just public comment. Good.
Thank you. The, uh, property owners, uh, many property owners have, uh, several lots, they have one house and one lot, but the adjoining lots are separate from that, and those are the lots that they may be paying a standby fee for. Uh, the bridges, the recorder's office allows property owners to conjoin those lots for tax purposes only, not actually conjoining, so they're still separate lots, but they could be conjoined for tax purposes only. Uh, if that is, the homeowner does that, does that alleviate them from paying the standby?
If, if, if it's a legal parcel, so it has a separate APN, they are, they can tie themselves together. I believe they have a separate APN and they would still be charged the standby fee.
Okay, because, uh, when I talk with the, uh, the tax collector and the recorder's office, they say, talk to the agency.
Yeah, I, and again, I, I'd have to do more research on it to figure out exactly that scenario. Yes. A lot of these are just vacant lots that still haven't been built on, but some of them are those that you're talking about. I believe that when you combine, when you conjoin, and it's just conjoined, I believe they have two separate APNs still. Uh, and I believe you, and I believe you would still pay this fee on a vacant parcel that is still conjoined. I think the only, the only benefit to conjoining is that you get one bill for, for lots.
That, that's actually correct.
That's actually correct. I, our last house, not this house I have right now, we had two lots um, with two separate numbers, and so our options were to merge it together to get rid of the standby or keep it separate and still have the standby.
Look at that, see where?
Yeah.
I'll I'll include that as I've merged lots, once they merge, then it's one.
Yeah.
Merging, yes, merging legally makes them one lot and they have one APN. If they're not merged, let's say there's three vacant lots and there's no house and there's sewer in the street, they will have to pay standby. Sewer standby, but the question is different, it's not about merging, it's about conjoining.
Right, for tax purposes. And and conjoining, conjoining. Uh, again, I'm going back my days as the city engineer for the city of Big Bear Lake, conjoining lots have two APNs and conjoined lots, uh, conjoined lot would still pay um, separate fees for each lot. This would be the standby for a vacant lot and the other one would be a regular, uh, EDU.
I think to Joe, the terrible dream of working and co-giving is that you can go backwards on that and sell those lots.
You can split them anytime you want.
Uh, conjoining, you can go back and you can sell those lies, just but it's a a a definite answer, can can you send me a definite answer?
I I.
Can I find it out?
I I, no, I I'm I am positive in my answer to you.
Right, we did not merge our lot.
That's right.
We conjoined it, so we got one tax bill, it was, everything was on one bill, but since we didn't merge, we were still paying the standby and we figured it was better because we could unmerge it and that's a lot that already has a sewer stand, you know, standby charge being paid on it.
Okay, I was just asking if there's a definitive answer that's
You have.
I can get in writing that says, no, this.
I I I.
I think because that's tax collector and the re- recorder says, ask the agency.
Right, and I and they and the a- agency is answering to you. I'm telling you for sure.
If you want to combine, the county will charge you a fee. There's a fee. And they will give you a new number.
Right.
For those who love.
That's correct.
So they should be able to answer, not merge, combine. Because yes, if you merge that line spawn and to be able to sell them, you'd have to survey it again and undo it. But if you look on the maps, especially out in the smaller ones, even here in their city, and you may have a house on three lots.
And you may not be able to.
One number.
If if you come, yeah, you may not, the the line is still shown in in the maps.
It's a dot, it's a dot.
It's a dash line, and so they still have, they still have underlying, there's still two APN numbers.
Yeah.
So you can still get two two dollars.
Okay, so just completely answer. All right, now.
I gave it to you. No conflicting.
We have a, yeah, we'll see, we have a discussion.
And I have that one, I mean, have you sent me a letter, email?
Uh, let's move on, um, is there a motion on this one? Do we need a motion? Yeah, we have a motion.
We have not had a motion yet.
We'll, we'll adopt a adopt resolution two, uh, twenty four, yes, that can move, that's our motion, seven. We'll call it this.
Vice Chair Eric.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi.
All right, public hearing resolution, uh, zero three two twenty twenty four, resolution of the governing board uh, admitting the sewer user charge subject annual review and taking certain other actions related there to.
Okay, before you use a resolution, there's the enforcement of the user charge for fiscal year twenty five. The sewer user user charge base rate for fiscal year twenty five has been changed from what was presented a year ago, which is an increase of eighteen percent. This includes four percent for Barwa operating costs and fourteen percent for costs associated with replenished Big Bear for either debt service if the project continues or costs to close out the project. And we're open for any questions.
Questions at staff report?
Yes.
Walsh. If we approve this, do we inadvertently, uh, also approve a replenish project?
No, this, this is just supposed to the, pardon?
I will hold you to this.
I I expect you to, Larry. So, um, this approves the rate structure to collect, either way we will be required, either way, whether this project moves forward or not, the the rate increase that we are suggesting in here, we've kept it the same specifically because we didn't wanna, first off, the city already adopted the rates, right? And we didn't wanna change that on anybody, so we didn't wanna propose a different rates because, you know, the board has not taken action on the replenished Big Bear project. The the rate structure that's in here would fund either the project moving forward or the project, the the project not going forward. Either way, the rate, the rate structure is going to be required to handle either one.
No, I may learn, because you could previously brought to me personally, maybe not at the meetings regarding our the increase in rates and that might offset some of the the problems canceled. How are we gonna pay for returning?
Exactly.
So no matter how you feel about it. This this should go.
Okay.
Yeah, um, director, who's something here for the question? Let's go here.
No, I can back you up, though, I asked our city manager the same question, so he said the same thing, it would not inadvertently inadvertently set this into approving the replenish Big Bear.
See, I like that guy, yeah.
We have a motion.
No, we need to open the public hearing.
I was the public here, I'm sorry. Let's open up the public hearing.
True, it does not inadvertently make replenished Big Bear so-called, uh, go forward, it's not approval of replenished Big Bear, but it is a rate increase that will pay for more than if if there was no replenished Big Bear, this rating three is paid, it's collecting much more than is needed, so it's paying for RBB, but it's not necessarily approving it, so that's that's what, but it could be, we keep hearing arguments in favor of RBB, the project and saying, well, we approved the rent fees, so it's already paid for, so it's going to, we keep hearing that that smoke that it's, oh, that's what was said in front of the, uh, the city council. Uh, well, the city council, you've already approved the rate increases to pay for replenished Big Bear, and that's what was told to CSD before the threat. And, uh, so, you know, yes, it can pay for that portion, eighteen percent, that's a seventy nine percent increase. That means that it's paying for a replenished Big Bear, which for that fiscal year is seventy nine percent of the Barwa budget. Seventy, RBB, the project is seventy nine percent of the budget, and this pays for that. And, uh, that's a lot I sent back out to, uh, board members, and, uh, I have documents I can show you. Believe you. Seventy nine percent for fiscal year twenty twenty five, RBB becomes seventy nine percent of the Barwa budget without. And then for, uh, twenty twenty six, RBB is ninety nine percent of the Barwa budget, then it's the next year, twenty seven, ninety nine percent.
Do you have your time?
No, it's, I've got two, two minutes.
What word did he?
I have a mic from somebody's phone.
I apologize, somebody dinked it, I thought that was a tie.
I heard it too.
So in twenty eight, the project is seventy percent, so over the next five years, the project is ninety four percent of Barwa budget, and, uh, I don't think Barwa is even the agency to do a sustainability thing for that, so, yeah, you're paying for it, it does, but it's, uh, uh, it doesn't necessarily approve the budget, but you're taking the money from people. That's what you're saying, you're taking the money from from the people for, and that's, and we used an argument years ago, I told, I told David and I told, uh, management here, talk to the people, get the people's approval, this was years ago. And they didn't listen, they didn't go to the people, they said, come to a meeting where your time is limited, we control what you say. So, and, uh, they didn't, that's why now all the people are saying, you know, distribute a vote, so here you have rate increases that were promised and, uh, when, uh, EB and K had their two, uh, lawyers tell you about how to fund all this, they said, they went through a couple of different ways, and they said, okay, this way, you have to get a vote of the people. I guess it was a voter based then, then they said this other way, you have to get have a vote, you have to have an election, because these are taxes, and then they said, if you raise fees, you don't have to have a vote. And John Green said, well, that's the way we should go. So this amount about transparency and letting the people decide, it's been long coming and we, Barwa's been warned about this, and it's on them if it's eleven hour stuff is happening. And all of this is on the record, so. Thank you.
Hold on, did you hear what's going on? Let's see. I close the public hearing. Uh, bringing it back to the board, Director Walsh. For Bridget or David, I don't care.
If replenished Big Bear fell through and we only needed three or four years, because we're only in the second year re-increase, and that turned out to collect more money than it would require to pay back everything, we don't have to go to the fifth year, do we?
No, we do not. And and we would not, right, we we are, we're all, our agency is only allowed to cover the cost of of doing business, period. We are not, we would not generate extra funds.
Back your grants.
Right, that's part of it. Part of it is payback grants and loans and and, uh, existing contracts to get out of existing contracts, you know? Like we talked about, there's nine point seven million dollars worth of stuff.
And and then, just to correct my, if if there was a surplus, then eventually you'd reflect it back in the ratings.
If there was a surplus, you know, if we were done paying everything off and there was a surplus, then then we would roll back rates. Right, I mean, that would be the the right thing to do, right? I mean.
Any other questions?
Or just a comment? That is assuming that the ones who gave us the grants don't want the money back immediately, and none of that is clear at this moment.
At this moment, the language in the in the in the language in in our grants, the the one, the ones that we have, well, the language in some of our grants say immediately payback. Whether they will actually do that or not, and there's penalties and and interest due as well, whether they act, we we can't negotiate our way out of that, I I don't know yet. I haven't gone that route, because I really rather not go back to them and say, by the way, there may be a chance that I don't want your money, I I don't wanna say that yet, I I want, you know, the opportunity to see how this, um, you know, flushes out.
Right, so in in other words, we're not making any, we can't make any promises regarding the rates and usage for paying off debts until we have all the facts in front of us, and we just don't.
That's correct, and I, and if if that comes out, then I will bring a full schedule back to the board for their consideration on how to deal with the grants, the loan, and the contracts, and we'll get a full report on how to, how to to deal with that piece.
So I brought it back to the board and, uh, any more discussion on the item? The motion, move to approve resolution three twenty three four. First, the second, questions on the motion, discussion, and we'll call it.
Vice Chair Eric.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi. We have another public hearing on evolution four dash two twenty twenty four, uh, uh, to be increased for key schedule for the disposal waste delivered to the regional treatment plant subject to annual review.
Okay, so before you use a resolution to review and approve the increase to the schedule for the disposal waste delivered to the treatment plant for fiscal year twenty five, the waste disposal fees for fiscal year twenty five are unchanged from what was presented a year ago, which is a four percent increase. And I will open for any questions.
You're all done the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, let's see. Yeah, there's some public here still.
Okay, these are more increases, uh, that will be argued, oh, we already paid for, uh, the project that doesn't produce any drinking water, that doesn't produce any ground rechargeable water. At least, well, it doesn't, they're just dumpster water and, uh, west of, uh, division. So this is more increases, uh, it's not called a tax, it's called a fee, but, uh, you call it a fee, uh, and you have to provide a service. And if this that service is not provided, uh, the fee does not, uh, comply with, uh, proposition two eighteen, so it has to be an actual service. Is this creature, who did I prove, rate increases for a service that may not be provided? Who knows, but here it is again. This is what is actually funding the project, the RBB, the loan does not fund the project. That simply creates debt that the people will have to pay in the future plus interest, a loan is not funded, so uh, I see that that there's, this is a ten C rate, is that correct? So it's just more rate increases that are for a project that this agency should not even be doing. Uh, I was hoping that, uh, I didn't have much hope that this project would be canceled, but cancellation is the proper thing to do here because Barwa is not an agency that should be doing this, and they've told you that essentially, they say they're just here to treat sewage and dispose it. And the the plan, the project, is they're just gonna dump it west of Division, and after eight or nine years planning, that's best they can come up with.
Does I, is this affected by the, uh?
This is above these.
He is actually completely wrong.
Well, still, we'll keep going.
Okay, so I'm gonna be interrupted again.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to, so I know what you're talking about, but I think this this particular item, it's not tied to the replenishing Big Bear project at all, is it?
It is not.
Any increases? But this is not reflected in those, the the rate increases for the replenished Big Bear project is not tacked on with this.
Does this increase the, is this, uh, release rate increases going to the budget of Barwa?
This is for service, just for a service, four percent is just a four percent increase to provide a service.
So for you to take the sewage, you're charging four percent, or a small amount, and there's costs involved with that, but the sewage that you're taking is a valuable resource, it said that on the, uh, website, it says that's a valuable resource, that's where you get the water for replenished Big Bear. So you're charging more for the people to give you the raw material, let's call it, that you're gonna use for replenished Big Bear, so those springs are connected to replenish Big Bear because you're taking sewage and then you're gonna treat it. So you can't separate that and say, oh, we're just charging you for the sewage, that sewage is your raw material for so-called replenished Big Bear, and CSD and EWP don't get any credit for that. They're providing this raw material that's a valuable resource. And there's no provision for credit for that, we're just getting an increase in the rates of giving you water, used water, so, yeah. That's all I have to say about that.
If I have one, maybe, if I wanted to speak, to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board members.
So I had, I know the answer, David, but what is delivered to the plant here in chemical toilet, holding tanks, septic tanks, is that regular sewage?
Uh, no.
Highly concentrated.
It's highly concentrated.
Is there much water in there?
Not much water.
Okay. And it's, you have to deal with.
And and by the way, just to clarify, the the replenished Big Bear rate structure that we are, that currently is being proposed or was adopted by the board, but now, it's not any with this. This rate doesn't, isn't affected by the replenished Big Bear project until the project actually is implemented. Until then, there is, this rate stays exactly the same, and the only thing that it reflects is an increase. And the only thing that it reflects is an increase based on the. Um, annual increase of Barwa's base rate, which is basically our operations right now. So, you know, four percent reflects what our increase is for twenty twenty five. For operations only, so it has nothing to do with. Any valuable product or byproduct or any of that other stuff.
And highly concentrated sewage is more expensive to treat.
It is much more expensive to treat.
That's why these rates have been calculated.
These rates have been calculated several times, a study's been done several times about those rates. To support the the rate structure that's proposed in here and. You know, it it has been confirmed on several occasions.
Trucks roll in with the sewage in their tanks, on their trucks.
Right, from Balden Lake, from.
Light into the Cuban system.
That's correct.
Thank you, if you had a trailer camper for now, it goes into the regulations.
The, well, depends, like you, I I think you could technically come out here and dump out here. I I think there is a rate structure for that, but for the most part. People go to the park with the RV parks and dump there and then it comes to us. And that is with everything else, yes.
All right, bringing it back to the board, any discussion on this item, or a motion? Don't move the resolution. Second, first and second, anyone discussion or motion, seeing now you have all of this.
Was Director Walsh the second?
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi. Okay, um. This can be a resolution of the board for fiscal year twenty twenty five, approving budgeted projects. Defining approval of the budget of budget or project with them coming you under account money, bar and a quality.
The fiscal year twenty five draft budget was presented to the governing board at a budget workshop in February. The only change to the draft budget was in insurance costs. So we received the estimated insurance cost from the insurance provider, which came in higher than forecast. The total increase of operating expenses resulted in a change of around twenty eight, twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, the recommendations are followed, adopt a resolution, adopt the budget and seven. Direct staff to file the C Q notice to exempt him. And in the event, the R B B project is canceled, direct staff to bring a budget amendment to the governing board once final costs have been been determined. And open for questions for.
Questions, staff. Open the public hearing.
So this is the total budget for Barwa, is that the twenty twenty five proposed budget? And this does include the project. And as we're just told, if the project does not go forward. Will a, another budget will be presented. That's amended, amended budget will be brought forward. And when I'm trying to understand the the budget. I look at the documents that are provided in this. There's a pie chart, so maybe people live funding breakdown. And pie chart, it says the WIBI alone, and then there's grants and cost sharing. But it doesn't show the total cost of the project, it just shows the loan and the grants. And some other grants of bonds. Uh, why doesn't this pie chart have the total cost, total budget in pie chart? And then have sections of the portion of the budget, the. R B B and. The grants, then show the grants. Again, it's just, it's a WIBI loan that's funding breakdown, why don't we get that information? In the agenda packet that shows a pie chart, that shows the total cost. And to answer my own question, it's not really a question, it's. Because that would show how little the the grants are in the total budget. And then with the loan, alone, again, that's not funding. To the mind of the government, when you get a loan, that's that's funding, it's not really funding. When you buy a house, funding is, you know, you pay the payments, that's. This is, uh, this budget is gonna be paid by the people. And it's going up. Twenty two percent of eighteen percent, maybe that's a. For a different section, but this does fund and does not. Necessarily approved R B B, but this is funding and the increase, hiring more people and spending more money. I guess that's what government is made to do, is to spend money, our money. There's a Canadian politician and he was at a hearing. And he asked the witnesses, where does the money come from? Nobody could answer that, the money comes from the people. That's even in Canada, he made a good point, where does the money, he asked us. This is under oath, the people, they couldn't answer, they could not say that the money comes from the people. Even the grants, that comes from us too. The federal government, whoever the grants are, that's coming from the people also. So when you approve a budget, realize it's the people who unfortunately didn't show up here. This is a hearing for a budget approval. And this is what's what happens when you have a hearing and only a. Opposition under two proposition two eighteen to if somebody doesn't want to pay the. People over fifty percent of the rate payers have to send in a letter or somehow. Get their opposition. But that's not an election, that's not a ballot. So you have very little power here at the board and I. Some of these board members know how much I agree with them and I admire all of you for sitting here and. So just remember whose money is that. Thank you.
Any other discussion to speak, you now to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Any discussion, questions? I'm seeing. Ladies, I'm sorry, huh?
Christine, you know every line of this budget intimately, right? Why, I thought I read in here. The money for the roof. Or is it that?
No, no, it's the roof for the, yeah, for the sledge building and O A C building.
So deciding, that's not the one with deciding the roof, this is the lab.
This was, not this way.
No, it's the bad, you have the lab building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm surprised to see that. Yeah, it's just, it it's just a time.
We're we're. We're taking down the. Any more discussion, questions, ready back for a motion? Oh, do you have, okay. Second, oh, yes, yes. There's a third and second and discussion on motion, and we'll call please.
Vice Chair Eric.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
All right. So let's see, we move to the end, we're gonna cover your board committee appointments.
So each each, the month after we. In March, we. We administrated the operations and the finance committees. Um, in the staff report, it was, uh, who's on the committee currently. For each committee, I need a motion and a second and then a vote. We let to.
Proceed your question. I thought that in the past, there was a motion and a second and people voted, but I thought it was at the purview of the chair.
Uh, ad hoc committees are appointed by the chair, but the others.
Others.
Yeah, you guys have a discussion about who wants to volunteer.
Okay. Okay, okay. So we do want to try. So we have a vacancy.
Yes.
Do we want to volunteer for that? Anybody wishing to volunteer for that? For which one? Administered. They don't explain it to the two new board members, but yes. You don't?
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
Yeah, it's.
This is a permanent committee tasked with providing advice to the government board regarding meetings with the general manager. The my evaluation, performance, participating in development and hiring of management level staff. And other tasks assigned by the government board. It's really about working with me on specific items, it could. You can see that away, Larry.
We need to mark them, so I didn't know if anybody wanted to jump in.
I like you got anything else to do.
I'll volunteer for that.
Is Director Walsh remaining on the committee?
Walsh. Larry, you and I are.
Okay, um, that's scary, I I, okay, if I'm allowed to, yeah.
So we need to take a vote on each one of these now. So I guess we need a motion for, I'll move to point Director Walsh and Director Segovia. The administrative committee, do you have seconds?
Certainly.
Discussion, we'll call please.
Vice Chair Eric.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Bye.
And Chair Miller.
All right, on to the finance committee, Eric, are you?
I'll watch the man on the committee.
So that I, uh, so, um. I'll make that motion, for the finance committee to be myself and the vice chair Eric.
My second man.
Vice Chair Eric.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
And again, on operations committees, we have myself and. Uh, do we want to, if they're soon, who want to vacate that, okay.
And sexually, uh, for work, in my opinion, for new people, it's great to be on operations because this is a complicated plant. Um, you can turn a valve incorrectly somewhere and.
Flood out, please.
It has to be reported to the state.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, um, I'm glad I just get to look at the policy side of things and I actually run this plant.
Not not me, it didn't happen to me.
Director Russo, it'd be a good opportunity to find out how we operate the plant.
It's exciting.
It is.
And it's fun.
I don't want, how how often is he able to do that?
Once a week.
No, thank you.
If something big breaks.
It's, you know, by the way, and and they're required that like you have to take a handful of sludge off of the belt press and and. That's just around your hands, it'll taste.
That doesn't bother you at all, yeah, that's fine.
Director Russo volunteered to replace Vice Chair Eric. So I'll go and make that motion on the operations committee, for Chair Miller and that and Director Russo. Second, so the time for this.
Vice Chair Eric.
All right.
Director Russo.
Yeah.
Segovia.
Oh, man.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi.
Uh, we're down to the replenishment of your advisory committee appointment.
Yes, so this is a another committee that is appointed by the chair. Um, and he can appoint two directors to serve on the replenished big bear. Um, project as a ad hoc committee. And so back in March of twenty three. The board decided to create this ad hoc committee and. Um, we're looking, we have one vacancy and one director on it. And we met once.
Can I make a nomination?
We met once.
Uh, I'll let you see Director Segovia on this.
Okay, seven.
It gives us an appointment by the chair.
So then I just make the appointment at this time, and I'll go ahead and point, but Director Segovia to be replenished bigger. Um, advisory committee.
And is Director Walsh remaining?
And Director Walsh, I'm sure, Director Walsh. Um, so. That's the appointment, we'll be closed, general manager comments?
Uh, I have none, I think I've said enough.
Our board members?
No.
All right, thank you.